Okay, would you go ahead and call the clerk, let's call the roll, please?
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Okay, well, I've been in communication with Alderman Wilson, and I know he's on his way from the airport, was just traveling back from being out of town this weekend. Welcome, everybody, happy President's Day today, or this evening's Evanston City Council meeting on Monday, February 19th. You know, my one and only announcement that I have tonight is there's a lot of pain in this community, in Chicago, and across the country when it comes to gun violence. Obviously, we all saw a week ago what happened in our own community with a young man who was murdered. We saw what happened last week to a Chicago police officer who was killed in the line of duty, Commander Paul Bauer. And then we all saw what happened in Florida, in Parkland, Florida, last week. And people are angry, and people are sad, not only for the people that were killed, but for our cities and our states and our country, that we can't do more to address this. I want to thank the people that have reached out to me, I've gotten several emails from people here in the community who have asked, you know, "Mayor, what can I do? What are you going to do?" I share the same level of frustration and, in part, helplessness, but we can't just sit here and be helpless. A couple things that are going on, I did sign today, and I had been at the U.S. Conference of Mayors a couple weeks ago, and I met with the folks from the Mayors Against Illegal Guns, which is a program of every town for gun safety, every town does some great work across the country. I went ahead and signed that statement of principles today. I'm not going to take time and go through all those principles, but I think people in this room are pretty familiar, you know, 30,000 people a year die from guns in this country, 15,000 of those are homicides. And so, this statement of principles, of which we've, you know, and I've gone ahead and signed, focuses on, you know, to the maximum extent possible, you know, punishing law criminals who possess, use, and traffic illegal guns, targeting wholly accountable irresponsible gun dealers. There's some important legislation right now in Springfield on dealing with that problem, looking to develop and use technologies that aid in the detection and tracing of illegal guns, and lots of other principles here. Second thing that I wanted to make an announcement about related to this topic is that Moms Demand Action, which is another terrific advocacy group, is organizing a march in Springfield, okay, and they're going to be focusing on that gun dealers licensing legislation that's up there. They are going to be traveling out on Wednesday, February 28th, there's going to be a bus from Evanston. If you are interested in going there, please either go to Dear Evanston, the Facebook page, or you can email DearEvanston@gmail.com to find out more information about it. You need to register by this Wednesday, which is February 21st. And so, thank you for people in the community that are organizing that. The bus is leaving early, it leaves at 5:00 a.m., and will be coming back that same day at about 8:30 p.m. But again, we need to be doing something, and people are looking to get our legislators to move on this. And lastly, I am going to hold a meeting that I will facilitate this Thursday evening in the parasol room at 7:00 p.m. And I'm going to focus, for anyone that wants to attend, I'm going to focus on brainstorming sessions on specific concrete things that we can do. I mean, those students in Parkland are talking about that right now, and they're talking about, you know, a march in DC, we'll see how that develops, but what can we do from where we stand here in Evanston to try and get more sensible gun laws in this country? I can tell you, our United States Senators, our United States Congresswoman are very supportive of, you know, the vast, vast majority of people here in Evanston that want to see some sensible gun laws in this country. So, those are three things that are related to what's on the minds of a lot of people. With that, I'm going to turn to the city manager for any announcements you may have tonight.
I don't have any, sir.
Okay, city clerk, any announcements?
The only announcement I have is just giving an announcement about early voting that will start March 5th through March 19th. The first week, early voting will run from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., the second week from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Saturdays and Sundays, early voting will be available as well. Tomorrow is the last day to register to vote by paper application, and you have up until March 4th to use online voter registration. And mail-in ballot applications are available in the clerk's office, and you are able to submit them until March 15th. That's the only announcements.
Terrific, terrific, thank you, Clerk Reed. Tonight's meeting is a really a special order of business meeting, we're going to be covering two really important topics. One is the library and the future plans that the library has, and the second is the Robert Crown Community Center, and a real more in-depth conversation than we've had before about that project and the funding of that project, in terms of how Friends of Crown, a community organization, is doing, as well as a report from the city staff to the council, so we can have, hopefully, a robust conversation tonight and give the staff some good direction. So, before we get into the special orders of business, we have public comment, I have three people that have signed up for public comment tonight. You'll each be allotted per our rules, up to three minutes if you need it, and the three people is Janod Rizki, Irv Chokol, and it looks like Marvin Farrell, I apologize if I mispronounced.
Tonight, I want to be clear, I realize the city clerk's actions have recently have embarrassed himself, but I feel we have a much bigger embarrassment here with the city manager. Some have suggested Mr. Reed may bring a lawsuit against us, but we had a recent lawsuit that cost us over $1 million with a city employee. Let's remember James Park, residents were told the water was safe to drink, yet we're in a lawsuit that has cost us over $3 million with Nycor because the city's suing for contaminated pipes. What's interesting tonight, we don't even have a city attorney here, because we have such chaos here, it appears to me, in the staffing of that department. Frankly, we tend to, what's gone on here, I feel, for the last eight years is, we have basically misused city resources in a very dramatic way. City staff and many projects, it appears to me, we do not have proper staffing for things. I think Robert Crown is one issue that I felt very strongly, I asked questions of people here, they, at one point, they told me that, well, the architectural firm was going to run the project. I recently learned, though, there will be a staff member on the project, and asking some questions, though, that staff member appears to be very overbooked with work. It seems we haven't proper staffing here of projects, which is creating problems in many of departments, and obviously, we don't account for staff's time properly, staff is misused on many projects that are pet projects of the Alderman, when they should be working on other things, because there's no accountability to hours and what's going on here, because they don't have to track their hours, and that's a problem. And I recall recently, the Law Department wanted to spend $20,000 to track their hours. What about the engineering departments and how these staff are allocated to what I call pet projects of the Alderman, and whether we ever got proper payback from the TIFs and things like that? So, we have some serious problems here. Several times in the past, I have mentioned that this Robert Crown project was a 4% property tax increase, I stated that at probably several, many meetings, frankly. It's interesting, it finally comes up, almost two years after it started, what it was going to cost us. That was pretty interesting, because the city budget, as we all know, is very chaotic, it's had problems this year, very big problems, and they're not going away. And in talking to some people, they think they're going to sell things, or put more tall buildings up in town, that's going to solve the problem? No, it's not going to solve the problem. Proper management's going to solve the problem here, and we need to get that done. And the only, the other thing I'm going to say is, with the presentation I saw here about the water, I'd be very careful to go to court with that, because it's very incomplete, and we're going to be in trouble. And I see you're nodding your head, and I think you agree, it doesn't make sense. As I've been saying for probably quite a few years, Evanston residents have been overpaying for the water, and basically, we've been subsidizing the other users, the city's been taking $3 million out of the fund, and none of that, that all come up in court, and it wasn't presented last meeting. And that thing needs to be corrected to show the truth of what's going on here in this water department. And I, you know, for several years now, I've asked that question, it's never been answered. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Irv, and then I think we have Marvin Farrell.
I'm going to defer.
Okay, you're going to defer, not speak tonight?
Not speaking.
Okay, all right, thanks, Irv.
Hi, I have to improve my handwriting, my name is Maura Farrell.
Jeez.
And I'm an Evanston resident, and I'm here tonight to just talk a little bit, three minutes or less, in support of the Friends of Robert Crown. The Robert Crown Center means a ton to my family, I grew up in Evanston in the '70s, I skated in the Nutcracker there, my mom took Jazzercise, exercise classes there, I think I had my fifth and/or sixth birthday parties at the facility in 1984, I was a cheerleader for the St. Mary's Tigers, we were in the Catholic School League, and the football team played on the fields. I have three kids who skate there, or have skated there, I have a daughter who's currently a mite, so she's an eight-year-old girl ice skater. The hockey program is so strong right now, we have kids from Olmert and Chicago and other suburbs who pay non-resident fees to come here and skate, mostly because of Del Morris and the great program that Evanston Hockey Association puts together. But really, what's important to me is that the girls' program is so strong. At my daughter's level right now, we have enough girls to form a team, which is amazing, because you used to have to go to other suburbs to get that. I want to see her have opportunities that I didn't have when I grew up here in the '70s. At my grade school, we didn't have girls' teams for basketball, or soccer, or softball, or anything, if you wanted to play, you had to play on the boys' team. When I skated at Robert Crown, there was no girls' hockey, that was not an option, you were a figure skater, or you stayed home. And so, I think this growth in girls' sports is so important, is really why we need more fields and more ranks. But this isn't just about hockey, I know that's a critique sometimes, that this is just for skaters, and it's not, there's a library, there's going to be a turf, there's going to be a track, and as your own city website, our website, the city's website says, "Welcoming over 150,000 visitors each year, Robert Crown Center is the city's most used health and wellness facility. Its impact reaches all corners of the region, and it helps make Evanston a wonderful place to live." I couldn't agree more, and I just want to commend the Friends of Robert Crown for helping the city raise money, helping make the city an even better place to live, and I look forward to watching my daughter and other future athletes in Evanston grow up on those fields and skate on those ranks. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you, Maura Farrell. All right, that concludes public comment tonight, which, you know, I don't think there's anyone else, so I appreciate everybody coming out, and those that are speaking, and those that are here, because they're interested in some of the items on our agenda. As I mentioned, there are two special orders of business, we will take SP1, the main library renovation project first, okay, and just a little background on this project, this was briefly discussed during the budget season, this past fall, the city council asked that we, the city council approved the library budget, but asked to table this particular item, this is a capital item for the library, so that we could have a more thoughtful conversation about that. And so, that's what we're here to do tonight, and once we finish up the conversation on the library, we'll move to Robert Crown. Okay? And we have Karen Danzig-Lions, who will come up and start the presentation on the library.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Reed, members of the city council, city manager Bob Kowitz, Karen Danzig-Lions, your library director, joined tonight by members of our board and our staff, but also, very importantly, members of the architectural team. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation to share with you, to give you more details about this project, and then we welcome any questions or further discussion. To put this project in a larger framework, many of our suburban libraries are ones that we're compared to, and so, I have on the first slide, some of our neighboring libraries, and showing you the series of renovations that they have undertaken just since the 2000s, some expansions, some renovations, some new construction, but many of the elements that you'll hear about in our project tonight, you'll see that our neighbors have already constructed and are operating successfully. I wanted to give you a little bit of perspective about the quality and the background of our architects, White and Associates, and so, those are some of the library projects that they've been involved in, on the left side of the panel, on the right side, we talk about, again, to frame some of this, some cost estimates based upon new construction, based upon renovation, and based upon the fact that we're estimating that our renovation will be about $84 a square foot. This is new to you, this is not new to us. In 2016, we began a master plan, looking with the staff and with the community, the elements that we felt needed to be added to the library, and also ways to minimize the costs, including reusing carpeting that we had in stock, reusing shelving, reusing as much of the furniture as we can to create a quality product, but also to minimize the costs. And we are looking at LEED certification, we're hoping for gold, we're confident we will at least get silver, so we will be saving both in terms of water and electricity as a part of this project. I'm going to invite, as we go through the detailed elements, and so that they can answer your questions, I'm going to invite two of our design team up to join me, Michael Barnes, who is the chief architect, and Jim Nagel, who's with White and is part of their costing team.
Actually, we could go back. Go back. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Michael Barnes, I'm a design principal with White and Company, and with me today is Vice President with our company and Director of our construction group, Jim Nagel. Mostly, we're here, I think, to give you a presentation of what the renovation design entails, but we also wanted to go over a little bit the process that we went through in determining an estimate of what it would cost, and explain a little bit why we're at where we are in terms of that. So, on this, on this page here, the words in blue are things to point out, that, as Karen mentioned, we started work, I think, almost exactly two years ago, working with the library administration and staff, going through several meetings to assess the needs and desires of the community in terms of what the library should improve upon. Along the way, we studied how to incorporate these changes while keeping the library open, so that patrons were not kept from using the facility. In so doing, at first, we had looked at a process where, once the design was done and construction began, there would be multiple phases that were broken apart, and so, you would do, say, one or two floors at a time, wait for a while, come back and do the rest. But one of the things that we determined was that it was more cost-effective to have a continuous process, sequential, still worked in phases, but without a break in between. So, that's where the 18-month process comes in, and Jim, behind me, with me, can speak more if you have questions about what the phases entail and why that process makes sense. But another part of what Jim's group was important to in the process is that, on staff, we have a professional cost estimator, whether our company is going to be the contractor or not, it's an amenity to me as a designer, or an asset to me as a designer, to be able to consult with a cost estimator, to determine what the design that we're coming up with will be estimated to cost. So, as we were designing, all the while, we were keeping in mind to choose durable, cost-effective furnishings and materials, but there were a few elements of the design along the way that was determined could be scaled back a little bit, while still keeping high quality, but in order to rein the cost back down, to be responsible. Part of that is also that, to the greatest extent possible, we are planning on the reuse of much of the existing furnishings that are in the library already, including all the shelving, including also some of the existing building materials. And then Karen mentioned that the design should achieve a LEED certification, and part of that involves relamping a lot of the, or pretty much all of the light fixtures throughout the building, because when the building was built, the energy-efficient fixtures that are available today didn't exist, and in order to save energy and save your power bill, or on your power bill, you can replace the light fixtures. But we also wanted to just put things in perspective with where the estimate is right now, and where it could potentially go if the project was delayed. Our current estimate, and this is full project costs, construction, furnishers, furnishings, equipment, fees of all kinds, is at $10.5 million, and you can see here, just year by year, Jim's group, with their background and knowledge of construction cost history, suggests that we anticipate at least, or on average, a 4% annual increase, so you can see that the price would go up considerably if this were to be put off. All right, but like I said, one of the things that we especially wanted to talk about tonight was to go through the design a little bit, and let you know what improvements will be entailed. This is a summary, after this, I'll go floor by floor briefly to highlight some of the things that we're doing. A lot of very important enhancements and improvements, we think, are a part of this plan, one of which is that there's a lot of space in the library that's currently staff-only space that is going to be converted over to the public use, almost 12,500 square feet by our latest count. In converting that, some of what is being improved is that there will be much more private and semi-private workspace and community meeting space, you'll see that a little bit more in detail coming up. Enhancements quite a bit in terms of the digital media and technology throughout the building, there will be a new, larger, and improved space, spaces, I should say, for the teens who use the library, incorporating much more self-service items like self-pickup of material that has been held for patrons, as well as checkout, self-checks. For some specific patrons, there will be a dedicated space for nursing mothers, as well as a gender-neutral washroom. Part of what is planned for the third floor, the tall, dramatic space, is that there will be some art exhibit incorporated in there, and then additional comfortable seating throughout the library. So, floor by floor, here is the first floor as it exists right now, and just as a transition, you can see, if I go back and forth, much throughout the entire floor will get changed. On this floor is the entry lobby, the main community room, and the children's department, but also the back of house, as we call it, the behind-the-scenes areas of the circulation workroom, a lot of that will get changed. There will be a more welcoming and user-friendly lobby, as I said, the self-service items like pickups and checkouts, there will be a cafe now, which there wasn't, a dedicated book sale area, the community meeting room is being increased in size, the children's department will be more secure in that the opening between the lobby and the children's area is being condensed a little bit, so that fewer people will just wander in there. There's a larger story room for kids, a parent-baby lounge, more computers than there are now for the kids, and again, the energy-efficient lighting. This is a view showing the proposed redesign of the entry lobby, this is just coming in through the main entrance doors, via a concierge desk greeting people, off to the right, you can see where we have the self-serve areas for pickups, as well as checkouts, and then the entrance to the children's department off to the left. In that children's area, I mentioned a larger storytelling space, as well as a craft area dedicated behind there. This is the second floor as it exists right now, you can see it's primarily just shelf after shelf of print material, that will change a little bit, we can eliminate some of the shelving to introduce more seating and study areas, and as well as, if I go back just for a second, there's one area for staff that's at the back there that is being taken out, and a dedicated quiet study room added in that corner of the building. Another thing you'll notice, if I go back and forth, on the second and third floors both, when you arrive currently off of the elevator or the main stair, there's a very large, sort of imposing, staff desk that is coming out, and there will be more of a reception area in there, and then the desk services are being distributed throughout the floor, so that they're a little less intimidating, a little more welcoming, and usable, so that staff can assist patrons a little more comfortably. And this is a view of that area that I just mentioned, the reception area with some exhibit space for artwork, as well as that desk in the distance. The third floor exists right now, and the thing to point out here, the, on the left half of the plan, and the top, where it's a darker yellow shade, that is all behind-the-scenes staff and storage area right now, and that is being taken out and will be dramatically changed. Over on the right is the current teen space, that now is going to move over to where that storage area was, and there will be many more public facilities available over in that northwest part of the building, a large computer lab, the, a larger teen space adjacent to that, a dedicated teen program room, which is something that doesn't exist right now, and then next to that, also a maker lab, and then some digital media labs as well. The east half, or portion of the building, again, if I go back and see it, it had the teen space and just some scattering of patron chairs and tables. This is going to be where we have much more of the group study and meeting areas than currently there are now, for anybody coming to use a room on their own or with a group, rooms of different sizes, to fit from one person to even 50. The two rooms on the ends, the north and the south, are divisible by a partition, or can be combined as one space. This is a view, in that tall, third-floor space, looking into where the teen maker lab and computer lab are planned, which, right now, there's a wall there that hides all the storage and staff space behind it. And so, what we're also doing is exposing and gaining the windows that are at the north part of the building, which currently are hidden. And then this is a view at that conference center, meeting room area on the east half of the third floor, and the teen space here. The fourth floor, as it's currently planned, is somewhat The fourth floor, as it's currently planned, is somewhat inefficient in terms of how many staff can be up there. But, so what we're doing, I mentioned removing a lot of the staff space that's down on the second floor and the third floor. What we're doing is, here in the fourth floor, this is the proposed redesign, changing the layout to be more efficient in terms of fitting more people. So this is essentially where staff who are currently upstairs will be, but also staff who are down at other floors, they'll be up here together now too with everybody else. So in summary, these are the plans of the proposed redesign of the library. Karen, that's everything I had to talk about. So I don't know, now we turn it open for questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening. As Michael indicated, we've worked with Karen and her team throughout the course of the planning of the project to develop cost estimates, to work on budgets, and to make sure that the program fits within the framework of the available funds. Certainly, one of the things that impacts that is the selection of materials. As Michael indicated, we're trying to reuse as much as we can. There's some excess carpet, we're reusing furnishings, et cetera. We've scaled back on finishes. But one of the things that dramatically impacts the cost is the duration of construction. And so by working with Karen and her team on a plan to identify where there's swing space, where staff could be moved so that work could be completed, so that we could execute this work in the shortest amount of time, it became evident that all this work, we believe, could be done in about a 17 or 18-month period while still maintaining full and open access to the library operations. We were also asked to look at, you know, what is the cost of waiting? You know, nothing gets cheaper with time, especially in construction. And so the budget we put together at ten and a half million dollars really assumes a start midpoint of this year. For every, for every year you wait in that process, historically here in recent years, it's been about 3.9%, 4% average increase in construction costs. And so starting in midpoint of next year would cost about a half a million dollars on a project of this size. And so you extrapolate that over time, over several years, or if you try to phase it over a longer period of time, the impacts do become pretty dramatic. And, you know, waiting four or five years to do this work probably costs an additional two, two and a half million dollars. And so we've been really responsive in terms of trying to identify those areas of the library that, where we could focus the greatest, get the most bang for our buck, if you will, selecting elements that really need attention, but leaving others for just kind of what we would call a light and bright, new lights, new carpet, new paint, that kind of thing. And so I think what we've ended up with is a plan that both addresses the needs of the library and, you know, the way the library gets used today in 2018 and beyond is very different than when it was constructed. And so to, both to update it for the, to serve the needs of the community, but also to be fiscally responsible with the funds available, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, stick around because there'll probably be questions from the dais. So, yeah, thank you very much for that thorough review. I'm going to open it up to the council for a conversation about this. Wally, I do notice that whereas Crown, we have for discussion, and SP1, we have for action.
That's incorrect.
That is incorrect. This should be for discussion as well. So both are for discussion and preferably from ultimately direction that the council's giving you, the city manager, on these, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go ahead and open it up to the people that want to have some conversation about. Yes, Alderman, break away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Karen, can you go back to the first slide, please? I think that, I like the comparison and listing out the various cities. Can you, maybe in the next couple of days, shoot us what those cities paid and the impact to the tax levy?
I'll be happy to gather that information for you and Sherrod.
That'll be great. Thank you. And I'll just share with you all up here, you know, I did have the opportunity to sit down with Director Lyons and go through this one-on-one, and, you know, I was pretty straight with her. In fact, I asked her if she could do an out-year projection on what the cost would be if this project were put off, because, you know, the reality is, we do have, you know, capital needs in this community. There has been a conversation going on with the prior city council and with the city council about what are the priorities in terms of, really, the community centers and the community gathering places, of which the library is one of the primary ones, as is Robert Crown. And I expressed concern to her, and I said, I think the council is feeling this as well about, you know, if we're going to take on a project at this time, you know, can we really take on both of these projects, meaning Crown and the library? And so, you know, I expressed that to the director. She certainly understood, and, you know, but again, as everybody knows, I think, our library is, you know, pretty quasi-independent in that it's covered by the Illinois Library Act, and, you know, and their fiduciary responsibility is to look after the future of the library and make sure we continue to have a great library here in Evanston. So, is there further discussion? Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I have a question. So outside of this remodel that's presented, what is the greatest need? I think before, there was talk about, you know, increasing the internet speed and such like that. So outside of this total project, what are some of the other needs that could be addressed?
Embedded in this project are things that, approaches that deal with digital literacy, that deal with equity of service and equity of access. In an increasingly digital and technology-rich environment, learning, job searching, and navigating information is really heavily technology-based, instead of have the ability to not only improve the infrastructure, which is aging, but also to have time and space to teach and work one-on-one in private, as well as group settings. That's embedded in the vision behind the third floor. If we start peeling pieces off, bits and pieces, we will, I'm not saying it can't be done, but we will lose efficiency, we will, it will cost more money. And so this is really a community-driven vision for the main library. I'd like to mention that when the weather was really bad and the snow was falling and the schools closed, Skokie called to see if we were staying open, and we were. We were one of two libraries on the North Shore that stayed open. Foot traffic count showed us that, comparing that snowy Friday to the previous one, one of our branches had more foot traffic, and both the main library and the other branch had almost virtually the same. And when we opened the doors, there were hundreds of people waiting there. The community depends upon us, not just for shelter, but for information and for community building. And that's the vision that's guiding this proposed renovation for your consideration.
Okay, so my other question just has to do with the library in general, not necessarily this project, but moving forward with looking at Robert Crown and the branches that would go there, what is your plan, or have you all discussed a plan for the Chicago main branch?
So as we know, the Chicago Avenue Main Street branch is down Main Street from Robert Crown. I would look for the first year of operation to see how many of our residents, our regular patrons migrate to the larger space at Robert Crown, and then would consider if and where the south branch should be located. I've signed a lease through the end of 2019. I would want time to look at how they choose to decide if it moves, where it moves, or if we still need it.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Saffron?
Director Lyons, and I'm going to ask the Robert Crown proponents the same question. If you're a taxpayer who doesn't necessarily utilize the library very much for whatever reason, how is this still a good use of public dollars to that person? And maybe more of like an abstract question. I mean, I get why it's valuable to you if you're a heavy library user. But if you're a person who's, like, dealing with the tax increase for District 65, you're looking at your overall tax bill, like, why is this a wise investment?
I compared the voters that voted in the election when there were education-related issues with the library card users. There's a lot of overlap. So I would suggest that the voters that care about education also care about the role of the library, the fact that we have more out-of-school learning time available to the students than the educators do. We work closely with the librarians and the school teachers to make sure that what we do in terms of programming supports the learning. We are also the only location in the city that provides things like digital learning and coding and a variety of activities that have a wider range of ages that we serve. And we also do not charge a fee to participate in these programs. And while it's not free, the taxpayers pay for the support of the operating budget of the library. We don't charge our users an additional fee. And so there are students that can't afford to go to MetaMedia, that can't afford to go to Hack Studio, but they can come to us, and we serve them, and we welcome them.
Thank you. Alderman Radey?
Do you charge for any of your services at the library?
We, well, we charge fees on a sliding scale to use some of the rooms. We charge fines if you do not come back.
No, not fines, but the rooms, that's right.
We charge fees, and so we would be having an additional revenue stream because we would have many more rooms that we could possibly rent.
That goes to a question I was going to ask about electricity. You pay electricity bill, right? Or do you not?
We're a city facility, so it's part of the city's.
No, no, because the ComEd does not charge for, charge buildings that do not generate revenues. So does the library pay an electric bill?
At this point, they're covered under the no-fee.
No-fee, okay. So don't tell them that you're charging fees for those rooms.
The fees are very, they're sometimes $35, they're very modest.
But they, so you don't charge, but it's a good thing that you are going to reduce your use of electricity with the lights. Another question. Can you divide out, can you sort your expenditures for these renovations by structural and cosmetic and furnishings, et cetera? I'm very interested in knowing that, because I believe we should expend for structural and those kind of maintenance issues versus furnishings. And I know you've told us many, many times about reusing carpet squares, but I'm concerned about some of the other items. I'd like to see that sorted out.
I'll work with the architects to provide that for you.
I mean, that should be pretty simple.
Well, thank you very much for the increased detail in this presentation. I think it's very, very helpful. I, you know, I look at this, and I think that this is, this is the right time, this is time to do this. I've said this before, of all of the city facilities that we have in Evanston, the types of, the ways that we use the library have changed the most dramatically of any other building I can think of in Evanston. I mean, we use the Civic Center almost exactly the same way we did probably in 1975, except we televise things. You know, it's meetings, it's gathering spaces, but the types of uses that are provided in our library are really dramatically different than what they were even when this building was built. And when I've been to National League of Cities conferences, meetings, so many of the workshops are on digital divide, increasing library use, ways libraries are used more and more in communities, and, you know, we need to make sure that we continue to do that. I think our library system, our library has continued to innovate and provide one program after another. I was in a meeting the other night, and someone mentioned something else that was going on at the library that I was unaware of, and another program. And, you know, I think that this is really important for us to continue to innovate. The space was designed for a use, types of uses and ways that we use it that we don't use it. And if any of you all remember what the children's room was like when the building was originally built, what we did do significantly improved it, but you can see that there is tremendous demand for individual spaces or small group meeting spaces. We have so many people who now work at home, and they're always looking for a meeting space. I have people call me all the time looking for a meeting space. And, you know, and I think that what's happened with the teen loft is just incredible, and the number of kids that I know who have participated in programs there. I think this is really, really important to the overall growth in our community, along with Robert Crown. And I've said this before as well, that I know people who are donating money to Robert Crown because the library is going to be in it, because they are so devoted to the library. So, you know, I think that this is a really innovative, interesting, important design. It looks at ways that we're needing to change the space in order to continue to be a vital community space, offering all kinds of new programs, as you do. I think people are always amazed when I tell them all of the things that our library does, because, you know, there are a lot of people who still go and check out a book. But, you know, I was mentioning to someone the other day who was very frustrated about getting a new device, and I said, you know, the library will teach you how to use that. And she was amazed. She was just stunned. She said, I'll go and learn, you know? So, you know, I think that we have to, you know, construction costs, you know, we made this decision, the last time I can think about this was when we looked at, I probably shouldn't cite this, but Green Bay Road and Ridge. I know that that, many people find that a little, that those changes not always positive. I find them to be positive. But we debated whether we could break that apart, or whether we should do the entire project. And we did look at what the extended costs would be, and they were going to be significantly more. So I think that's a really important thing to think about, that delay costs us more money. And we're, the worry now is about interest rates ticking up and inflation. So, you know, it's important to get things done now when we can, when the cost doesn't get too far ahead of us.
Alderman Revel?
Thank you very much for the additional detail. As Alderman Nguyen mentioned, it's very helpful. I was wondering if the library board has discussed at all any kind of a capital campaign to help raise some of the additional funds needed for this renovation?
Not in any depth for a couple of reasons. On an annual basis, we have a Fund for Excellence campaign to raise money. It's a letter-writing campaign, and that money supports our operating budget. Recognizing that there's a major capital campaign going on for Robert Crown, which does include a library, we, and recognizing that there's donor fatigue, that there are many very generous families in Evanston, but constantly asking our donors to consider giving more, we don't want to compete against ourselves. And when I say ourselves, I consider Robert Crown one of the things that we're doing. I'm in the process of working with the city staff to submit a $125,000 construction grant for Robert Crown to help defer those construction costs. Again, I decided not to submit on behalf of the main library, because I think Robert Crown and that combination, that interesting combination of the library and the community center and the sports is a more competitive application. So we're constantly looking for other ways to fund bits and pieces, and if there are any generous residents that want to talk to me about supporting the main library renovation or a part of it, I'd be delighted to have that conversation. But I really appreciate your time in allowing us to present to you, because this really is the first time that you've had the opportunity to see any of this. is the first time that you've had the opportunity to see any of this in any detail. And it's for discussion because there are a lot of pieces to consider, and I know it's part of a larger conversation around capital, but I really appreciate your attention. And we'll continue to answer questions based on what you've asked tonight and in the weeks ahead. And if, and you've already said yes to this request, Alderman Ravel, to let me come and talk at your ward meeting. And I know I'm scheduled on Alderman Braithwaite's as well. Thank you, Alderman Wynn. And so I'm available to help your residents hear about this, hear about more detail and consider this because it is a big ask. But it's an important investment in the community and I think it's worth your consideration. So I thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Alderman, ready?
I'm wondering if I could ask your architects a question?
Of course.
Do you build libraries from scratch? Are you familiar with building libraries?
Oh, yeah.
So if the city of Evanston were to commission you today, we did not have a library, a main library. Given the new technology, would a new Evanston library from scratch be the size of this library?
For the size of, let's see. Let me ask, what is the population of Evanston?
Just around the same, probably.
Seventy-five thousand. Seventy-five thousand.
Yes. Based on history of per capita size of a library to a community, what you have is right about where it ought to be.
Even though we don't have card catalogs and do, you know?
No.
Even though we have...
Right. The mission and offerings of libraries today are very different than what they were before, but as Karen was saying, and what you might hear in other communities, libraries are used as much, if not more than ever, just in different ways. And there are space needs still, but they are for different purposes.
So you think our library, we would build a same-sized library today?
Well, yeah. We, based on the needs and desires that we came up with for what this library ought to have, we actually had to put it together as a complicated puzzle to get it all in.
Okay. Could I get another number from Karen? Could you tell me the unduplicated number of teens who use the loft? Not right now. Unduplicated number.
Unduplicated on a given day?
No, no. Let's say in a year.
We have foot traffic counters at the doors of the building, not in the loft.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Then you're not going to be able to tell me that.
Yeah. And so for the loft or any other part, it's important to note that we welcome our visitors, but we don't keep track of who they are with the...
I thought maybe in the loft you did. I know all the social service agencies that we deal with, especially housing and community development, we insist on unduplicated numbers for all the, you know, we just insist on those numbers if we're giving them money and things. So I thought maybe you kept track of. We keep hearing about how heavily it's used and everything, but you don't keep any track.
I can tell you that as we introduce new programs, we're welcoming new teens, we're having more middle schoolers come into the teen loft, and so we're adjusting some of the programming. We could, I could talk to the team about doing some sporadic surveying of asking what your zip code is. Many don't know what their ward is.
I was wondering about the numbers of kids, yeah.
I can give you gross numbers, but not unduplicated, I'm sorry.
Because both of these, you know, Crown and the library are important capital projects, and the council does need to give some direction, my thought is that seeing no more lights right now in the library, that we go ahead, let's talk about Crown and then, you know, we open it up for a conversation at that point when the council's been able to hear from, from both of them. We'll ask questions of Crown and then talk among ourselves. Sound good? Okay. All right. So thank you, Karen. And thank you to the architects. All right. So, so the Robert Crown Community Center, as I think people know, and we will hear in a presentation that they will make shortly, is our most-used community center here in Evanston. The last council embarked on plans to bring either a renovated or a new community center to Evanston. And I know the council, the former council in this council has received updates. What I've asked today for the, for our discussion is for Friends of Crown, this is very much sort of a partnership in the sense that a Friends of Crown group was established to help raise, you know, philanthropic dollars here in the community towards this project because this would be the, probably the biggest project that this community has undertaken since the library 25 years ago. So this is a really, this is a big deal. So I've asked them if they would have one of their key folks get up and, and present to the council in terms of the process from their perspective and the amount of money that they've raised. And then we're going to have the city staff get up and talk to us about funding. As many folks know, you know, I've been working closely with the city manager and the city staff to address the question, how would the city come up with its portion, okay, to pay to bring a new community center here? So that's how we'll, we'll do this. I think Pete Giangreco is, is with the Friends of Crown and will start us off. And then after Pete, will we go to Erica Storley, who's overseeing it on a day-to-day basis from the city park? Welcome, Pete.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, city clerk, members of the city council. Just wanted to have my, the rest of my board members stand for a second because they've done a great job over the last year and a half getting this ball rolling. It was not long after I moved to Evanston 20 years ago where I started hearing this persistent question, what are we going to do about Crown? We've said over and over, Crown is the most-used public facility in Evanston. There's tens of thousands of kids who've come through the doors or played on the fields, and thousands of them have now grown up and their parents, and they've got their kids there now, playing flag football and soccer and lacrosse and hockey. For thousands of families, hundreds of skaters, the Nutcracker is a time-honored holiday tradition. So the Robert Crown Center has really fulfilled the promise that the Crown family intended when they gifted this asset to the city, fulfilled that promise and then some. But over 43 years, we've just about loved the Robert Crown Center to death. And if you've ever been there, when the buckets are out catching the water, falling through the ceiling, you know that it's way past time for something new. When I got involved in this project, the city was talking about a $17 million renovation. And it became quickly apparent that that just didn't meet Evanston's needs in 2018. The hockey program, because of the success of the Blackhawks and a huge surge in the number of girls playing, has grown 40%. The Evanston Youth Hockey Association buys ice as far away as Mountain Prospect and Northbrook because they have a growing program and a growing need. And the ice that we have at the current Crown just doesn't meet that demand. But it's not just about ice. There's so many city programs that go on at Crown, including the childcare center. We have 100 families at the childcare center, and the preschool there delivers quality, affordable childcare to a really diverse community. But it could never qualify to be NACI accredited because the rooms have no natural light or very little. The bathroom facilities are inadequate. The layout just isn't right for the student to, square foot ratio. So the childcare families are demanding more. Fam and other sports groups who would love to use the gym, but the gym's too small to have a basketball game and have parents watch. And because it's located at the end of a hall that we have to keep locked to keep the preschool kids safe, the gym is literally walled off from being used for the whole day. As a taxpayer, I couldn't think of a worse way to spend 17 or 20 million dollars to get just what we have now. The city smartly abandoned the renovation program and is talking about doing the Robert Crown building the right way. At public hearings, though, it wasn't about what was going, just what was going on in the building. What we learned is that Evanston is one of the few communities on the North Shore that has no turf, publicly available turf fields. Oak Park, which only has 50,000 residents, you know, a third smaller than Evanston, they have 310,000 square feet of turf. We have zero, none. The only turf we have in Evanston's at the high school and it's books out. So do Oak Park families love their kids more than we do? I don't think so. And our kid, our turf families are demanding more because, you know, Thursday or Friday night, a rainstorm had come through and flooded Robert Crown and it would cancel AYSO for a whole weekend, even after the storm was gone. So that's why the city is committing to building three new turf fields at Crown. Probably not enough for the need, but it's what we can, what we can fit and what we can afford. But the growth in soccer and lacrosse and field hockey has really been fueled by an explosion of girls playing. 10 years ago, the Illinois Girls Lacrosse Association didn't even exist. Four years ago, the ATHS field hockey, girls' field hockey team didn't exist. And here's why this is so important. Forbes reported that 82% of women in executive positions played organized sports in middle school, high school, or college. So when we improve access to sports for girls, we're not just strengthening their muscles, we're strengthening their confidence, we're strengthening their teamwork abilities, and we are setting them up to succeed. So girls and their families are demanding more. But I think probably the biggest we, need we face as a community is one of equity. Like a lot of diverse communities, we have some kids who have every advantage you can imagine, and we have some kids who don't, just because they weren't lucky enough to be, you know, born of wealth. We have a world-class university on one side of town, and we've got kids with no internet at home at the other. 14% of Evanston households have no internet at home, and in the neighborhood around Crown is far, far higher. So the city's Robert Crown Library is not just a place for books, it's for technology and for learning. And it's in a spot that's, where there is a serious need. 44%, 44 to 62% of the kids that go to the four elementary schools that serve Crown qualify for reduced or free lunch. And oh, by the way, when their school's closed, they get that lunch at Crown. So those students and those families, they would be able to check out Wi-Fi hotspots just like you check out a book. And, you know, if you've got any kids in high school, they hand out the computers at Evanston High School. If you don't have internet at home, that computer's not worth much. Families want access to summer reading programs, and, you know, if you're a kid trying to get to the downtown library where your parents are at work, that's a hike. So parents are demanding more resources so their kids can have a fair shot at fulfilling their potential. The public library, Evanston Public Library is also the biggest campus for Oakden Community College's, English is a second language. And when you think about where the growing Latino community is, and Evanston is really centered right at Robert Crown. In addition, the National Able Network already serves hundreds of Evanstonians and porting those job-training skills over to Robert Crown can help us reduce the skills gap, which is key to reducing the income gap that we have here at Evanston. We're also in discussion with Evanston scholars about locating a resource room at Robert Crown where their scholars can work on their college applications, their essays, get tutoring so that they can be the first in their families to go to a four-year college and university. So having all these educational and recreational resources in one place is really a paradigm-shifting opportunity. There's no place in the country, there's maybe one other facility that's like this in the entire country. So you can imagine a parent walks in, drops their kid off at preschool, goes and gets a lang, you know, gets help with their language skills or their job skills, lands a better job. You could see a kid who's one of the 300 kids who go to Robert Crown Summer Camp, when they're finished with Summer Camp, go into a summer reading program at the library. The new Robert Crown, as the city has envisioned, is quite simply exactly what our community needs and what our community is demanding. So the question tonight is, how do we pay for it? That's when Friends of Robert Crown comes in. We are the city's junior partner, helping to raise funding and build community support for the project. So we started off working for Marty Lyons, now we work for Erica Storley and Lawrence Hemingway and all the folks that are moving this project forward. When we started this, CCS, the fundraising consultant, said, there's like $3 to $5 million that you could go out and raise for a project. Like, that's what the survey, their best guess was. Friday, we announced that we've raised 11.1 million. So the question is, how do we do double than what the experts said we could? It's because people and organizations in the city see that we have a gaping need and they want to fill it. Northwestern is committing $1 million in programmatic funding because they want their students to have more opportunities to tutor and mentor. They want them to have fun in an alcohol-free facility on a Friday night. Beacon Academy has committed $500,000 because their kids need athletic facilities, and our new gym and turf fields will be available to them during the school day, where they mostly sit empty now. EYHA has raised millions of dollars because the hockey program needs two sheets of ice. And because there's two sheets, we're going to actually double the operating revenue that comes out of Crown. So closing the revenue gap, because I think it operates at about a $700,000 subsidy from the city council, closing that revenue gap because we've got fields we can rent, because we're renting to Beacon, because we've got double the ice and that we've got premium pricing for the ice, can help us pay down those bonds because we're subsidizing Robert Crown at a much smaller level. In fact, we have an elite hockey program that has to remain anonymous, has also committed a half a million dollars. And the exciting thing about that program is they play teams from all over the Midwest. That means they've got, we can be filling hundreds of hotel rooms in December, January, February, when they have the highest vacancy rates and when our restaurants are the least busy. So, yeah, Robert Crown is also a shot in the arm to our hospitality industry. But let's face it, Friends of Robert Crown only exists for one reason. The federal and state government has completely let us down. You know, 10 years ago, Jan Schakowsky, who is very supportive of this project, could have gotten a congressional earmark that would have brought millions of dollars into a program that's this needed. The state used to do capital bills, remember those? The state can't afford to, to pay its own way. So no more. Washington and Springfield have completely let us down. And that's why 450 donors have committed $11 million if we build a new Robert Crown that meets the needs of Evanston in 2018 and beyond. So we have a clear path to 15 million. We were, we were charged by this body to help the city have a public process that led to schematic drawings, which were approved back in September, and we were given a number to raise, and it was 10 million. And we hit that in October, and we could have, you know, put up our feet and said, nice job, and walked away, but we didn't because the demands were higher and people wanted more. And so we just felt like there was this great momentum. We said, we can, we can raise a lot more, we can do 15. And we didn't think we were going to get to 11 million until March, and we did it a month early. So we feel like we've got a path. And because it supports just about every youth sport you can imagine, but because it also has this like cradle-to-career opportunity, that's where really a lot of the new money is coming, is because folks like the Louis C. Brin Family Foundation, which committed a quarter of a million dollars last week, they don't do sports, okay? They do youth services and they do education, and they see huge opportunity here. So Alderman suffered and asked a question of the library, which I'll jump ahead of. If you're a taxpayer and you never go to Crown, what do you get out of this? Well, you're going to get a $48 million asset for $33 million. You're getting one-third off because the community has stepped up and raised money. Furthermore, this is an asset that will raise property values. We have Bearden Warner and Coldwell Banker on board because they want to give back to the community, but they also believe this asset will make Evanston home values rise. So all that for a dollar, for 146 more... So all that for a dollar, for 146 more to the average homeowner, sounds like a good deal to me as a homeowner. So to finish up, Evanstonians, with their words and the three community hearings that we had, to the dozens of stakeholder meetings that we had, and with all these dollars they've raised, they're sending a clear message. We want to do this together. We want to do this right, and we want to do this now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Pete. I was going to go to have the city do theirs before we do, is that okay, Alderman Wilsons? Okay. We'll, we'll probably come back to you with some questions or things, things like that. Why don't we go to our, I forget, is it Deputy or Assistant? Assistant City Manager, Erica Storley. And, uh, and just so background for people, Marty Lyons was the, uh, the senior city staff overseeing this, working in close conjunction with our Parks and Rec Director, Lawrence Hemingway. And with Marty, you know, Marty moving on, Erica has assumed that role, again, working really closely with Parks and Rec Director Hemingway.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, members of the State Council, City Manager Babkowitz. I'm Erica Storley, the Assistant City Manager, and I'm going to try to fill in all the pieces on how we plan to fund this building. So just a little bit about the schedule. Most of you are aware that we plan to start construction of the building this year, should we get the green light. The building construction is anticipated to conclude next fall, so the building would be open for skating and all the indoor activities as of September 1st, 2019. And then the turf fields would then start to be constructed with the demolition of the building, for those to open in the summer of 2020. So roughly, uh, two years, all in. It's a very aggressive timeline to construct this building, but it's necessary because many of the pledges that you've heard about for the funding of this project are contingent upon the facility being open in the fall of next year. Overview of the funding. Pete gave a good overview of where they're at, where we were at last year, when we last gave an update to the council, was the project was expected to cost somewhere between 40 and 46 million dollars. We've certainly got a lot more information now, as we've worked further and further on the project to get more detailed plans. We now have an estimated project cost of 48.5 million dollars. And with that, the revised fundraising goal from the Friends for the 15 million dollars. So the project costs, as you can tell, a lot of, the majority of the project costs will be borne in this year and in next year. We have a cash flow issue, basically. The Friends have raised the 11 million dollars, but of course, that 11 million doesn't come in, in one day. Those are pledges that are spread out over several years, some of them up to seven years. So we will not have enough cash, so to speak, in the bank to actually construct the project this year unless we introduce new funding. We need at least 18 million to get through 2018, if we are to break ground this summer, and then another 23 million to get through next year before we issue additional bonds. Some of the cost increases have come from subsoil issues being discovered on the property. We had an idea that the soil was not great there, as it is not in all of Evanston. We still have not quantified exactly how much the extra that will cost us, but we've built in some contingency around it. We've also got the preliminary design documents completed. The architects and city staff and the Friends have been working diligently to get those documents closer to completion, so that we have a very accurate expectation of what construction costs will be. And then, of course, there's a rise in the labor costs and materials that happen as a course of annual inflation. So as I mentioned earlier, we have this aggressive timeline. We feel that the construction timeline, while aggressive, can be met, but that is, of course, if everything goes according to plan and we don't have any issues outside of normal construction, acts of God, et cetera. But by doing the funding in this manner that I'm proposing this evening, we do have enough cash flow to get through the entire construction schedule. Like I mentioned earlier, the timing of the donations coming in over the seven years, those donations will continue to come in, and if the Friends are able to raise the entire 15 million, we have a plan for how we can remediate some of the debt that we'll have to incur as a result of that. Of course, every project has risks. We've already uncovered the subsoil issues. We don't know what other unknowns we have out there, because we haven't actually started to construct the building yet, so there may be some risks that we aren't aware of at this point, but there is contingency built into the 48.5 million. I think it's about 2.5 million to 3 million. Hopefully, we won't run into anything beyond that, but at this point, we don't know. And as, as a point of clarification, the, the second sheet of ice brings in much more revenue than addition, we currently have with Crown with the sheet and a half, but it will not completely, the Crown Center as a whole will not be completely covered by user fees. So we've been also working with staff to talk about what are our increased expenses related to this building. It's roughly twice the size of the existing building, so that will be more cleaning staff, more staff to, to support the building, et cetera. But there will also be increase in user fees because of the additional amenities. We've talked a lot in the past about this sort of general fund subsidy that is required annually to support Robert Crown. None of our community centers run at a profit, that's not their point, that's not the intention of them. But this center in particular, at present, runs at a $743,000 a year deficit, so that's the cost of having staff and program materials, subtracted by the amount of money that we bring in for program fees, et cetera. With the new Crown, obviously we'll have more revenue to offset that, but we've also set up the Robert Crown Maintenance Fund, uh, that was approved last year in order to have a dedicated funding source to maintain the building over the course of its lifetime. Right now, we've got placeholder in there of $200,000 a year to go towards maintaining the building. And that does bring down our operating deficit significantly over the lifetime of the new building.
Can I just ask a question, quick question? So why does, uh, what is it that, um, makes the deficit then rise up, um, you know, 50,000 or 60,000 to 532, starting in 2021?
I believe that's debt service on the bonds. So, working with all the city staff, we've tried to find a plan that could be amenable, that has the least impact on the taxpayer, but still lets us actually construct this building this year and open it for next fall. So what we've come up with is a proposal that we would bond out for an additional 22.5 million this year. That, that's, if you remember, as we talked about the 2018 budget, uh, last fall, we included 8 million in the budget for Robert Crown. But after we've spent more time running these numbers and seeing how much cash flow we'll actually need, we need, the new number that we need is 22.5 million. If we were to issue that this year, we would project it would be at approximately a 4% interest rate, and we would borrow that money at a rate of, at a 25-year rate. Normally, we borrow at a 20-year rate, but for projects like this, that only come about once every 20 years, it's appropriate for us to borrow for 25 years. In addition to that, in 2019, we would need to do an additional bond for this project of the 11 million for the city part of it, and then the 1.25 for the library portion of it. That bond issue would be for five years. We would only pay interest on those bonds for five years until we had a point where some of the money would be coming in from Crown, or from Friends of Robert Crown, to start paying down that bond. It basically buys time for the pledges to mature. You can also see on here that we're using some of the cash in hand from the Friends for the next three years. So we do have about 7 million in cash for coming in from the Friends as their pledges come in to help offset the costs of construction that wouldn't be borrowing cost. So the advantage of this plan is that there's only a one-time increase in the debt service levy. So, the increase would not be like this, it would be one, one time and then level. This is obviously good because the property tax levy would not have to increase multiple years out in order to accomplish this project. It also gives us the proper amount of cash balance in order to fund the construction of the building from start to finish. And again, I've talked about the 12 million bond would be only five years, and gives us that extra time for Friends to continue fundraising and seeing how far they can go with their goal. So the impact on the overall debt, this is where we talk about, what does this mean for the city, and how would we move forward if this scenario were approved? It still allows us to do our projects that we annually do for capital improvement. We approximately do 9 million a year on streets, other building improvements, et cetera. This allows us to continue to do that. It, however, does not contemplate any increase for the library renovation that we've talked about earlier. And also, when that five years is complete on the interest-only bond that we talked about issuing in 2019, we cannot do any capital projects in that year. That's obviously a challenge, but when we put it out five years, it gives us time to prepare. We can prioritize projects ahead of time, we can potentially identify other funding opportunities. Also, if the Friends of Robert Crown are more successful, then we can use some of the additional fundraising that they have as capital for other capital projects that we may want to do in the year that we're not projecting us doing any at this point in time. If the project were to come in on target, as far as what it is costing us or under, that would also give us some room. We were very conservative in how we ran all of this, because what we really want to make sure, at the end of the day, that we don't have to come back to the taxpayers in future years to finish the project or to cover anything that we didn't cover beforehand. The other part of this proposal is that we would obviously have to raise the debt limit. The current debt limit on the city is 113 million. We have about 112 million of existing debt. This is tax-supported debt, this is not inclusive of debt that's supported by the Water Fund and other sources that are not property tax-supported. Here's an overview of the tax levy for the last five years. We were very conservative and prudent after the recession, 1.25, 1.20, et cetera. Last year, when we approved the 2018 budget, we approved it at 2.52%. This is an overview of the budget that was approved in December. Basically, the levy only increased for solid waste, the library operations, and police and fire pension. When we projected what the levy would increase by, to include Robert Crown, we included those same increases that have already been planned for. So we have a 14%, 14% increase to the debt service levy specific to Crown for next year, and then all of the other levy increases that have already been contemplated. This does not contemplate if the City Council wishes to do anything additional or other than what we've already discussed to date. So in 2019, if we did move forward with this project, that is the second phase, when the second bond issue would hit the taxpayers, there would be a 2.89% increase in the levy. So as, if you remember the chart before, we were at 1, 1.25, and then last year we were 2.52. Next year would be 4.93, and the following year would be 2.89. So we have the one, one-year spike, and then try to get back down to a reasonable level. I think this slide is a little bit out of order. Taking into account the, all of the levies, the police and fire pension levy, the debt service levy, all of the levies that we do, there's the 4.93% on, on the average homeowner, which is somebody in the 356,000 range, is the medium, medium household price in Evanston, that would be about a hundred dollar increase in the property tax for next year, and then a 61 dollar increase for the following year. If you were to look at just Robert Crown and how it impacts the tax bill outside of the other levies, it's a 3.3% increase for next year, and then a 0.7% increase for the following year. And on the average median home price in Evanston being 356,000, over the 25-year life of these bonds, it's about 1,800 dollar impact on, on the homeowner. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, so thank, thank you, Erica, and, uh, and thank you, Pete, for representing Friends of Crown. Also, appreciate the work of Kate and Ashley and Bill Stafford. There was a lot of, you know, a lot of thought and a lot of analysis put into, to the presentation that Erica just gave. So why don't we, uh, open it up? I'm sure folks up here have, have questions. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go there. All right, Alderman Wilson.
My apologies to everyone for my late arrival, but, um, and, and thank you for the presentation, Pete. Erica, one thing, I, you kind of covered it, but I just kind of wanted to make sure that people projected the, um, the maintenance fund into the future. So, one of the things that's particularly appealing about this project and the way it's designed, from the financial, financial perspective, is that with that money going in on an annual basis, when we do have significant capital needs for this building, which we will, because they all do, there will be, quote, "money in the bank" to cover, hopefully, a substantial or all, all of what is required to do that. So this is a little bit of a new model. So we're building the expected needs of the project into the operation of the building itself. And I think that that, um, you know, that's going to help prevent putting ourselves, or, you know, future generations in the same situation that we're faced with right now, with, you know, trying to find ways to cover this.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman, your statements?
Thank you. How much of the 11 million dollar raise is prepaid rental?
Except for me?
Sure.
Uh, none of it. So, 11.1 million is capital only. So it doesn't account for hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars in fees that hockey or Beacon Academy or the folks who use the fields. So that's, the operating revenue is very, very significant, but it's separate from the 11.1 million we've raised. That's just capital.
So, I, I thought that I heard that some of the donations were prepaid fees for space.
Only, only Northwestern, and they have put very, very modest asks. They want Friday night time for a skate, you know, for college kids. Frankly, Northwestern doesn't give capital, so they had to be creative about how their gift went, and so their creativity was to make it a prepaid fee kind of thing, but we're, it's, it's, they've already given us money that we have in the bank.
So do we have a fair level of confidence, then, in the operating costs and the utilization of, uh, the ice because, or perhaps even the gymnasium, right, because of these multi-year commitments that we've got from Beacon Academy and Evanston Hockey and, uh, the unknown, unnamed one?
Yes, so, I mean, staff has been working diligently on making sure that revenue projections and cost estimates are as accurate as possible. So we have, uh, schedules out for the time that the building opens, for the years out, covering when the donations keep coming in, so that we know how much exactly we're getting from increased program revenue, and how much exactly we're, we're going to be spending on increased costs.
And some, and some of these agreements that we have go out seven years, 10 years, is that correct? Again, so, in addition to giving us a half a million dollars for the capital of this project, they're agreeing to give us $100,000 a year, whatever it is, to lease or rent that space at a designated time.
That's, that's correct. Our unnamed, uh, group that wants to come in is, it's a 10-year commitment. So, Lawrence Hemingway and his staff has done a great job. I mean, quite literally, the ice is booked for the next 10 years.
That's good, that's great. Okay, Alderman Rathaway.
Mr. Mayor, um, first, again, you said it before, just thank you, Pete, and the Friends of Crown for the amazing job that you've done, and, as well as the board. I'm sitting here now, waiting for the slide that shows how do we pay for both capital projects at the same time. And, um, I'm, I'm hoping at some point we can get to that. My, my concern, Erica, I guess, for the Crown project, over the years of Marty making budget presentations, he's always talked about our debt limits, and he's made a relationship to how that affects our bond rating. So my question to you, or anyone in the staff, is if we do increase the debt limit, will that impact our bond ratings, and then how will that impact, like, future lending for other projects beyond Crown?
Yeah, we've had many discussions about that point exactly. What we don't want to happen is for us to take on this debt and then for us to have a, a ratings decrease. a ratings decrease. But in talking with staff and other bond council, et cetera, we're confident that because of the planning that has gone into this and the proposed funding mechanisms, and with the addition of the support from the community via the Friends of Robert Crown, we don't think that this will have an impact on the overall bond rating. We think we're pretty stable in that regard.
Alderman Saffron.
Erica, this may be more of a Pete question. If we build this as proposed, where will this slot the Robert Crown center in with our peer communities? Will there be anything this nice in the area? Or are we going to be, for the time being, have the nicest facility of any of our peer communities?
I would say because of the programming that it's in. I mean, this is a building with very, very modest finishes. I mean, particularly the hockey rink, it's stripped down, it's not anything palatial. But because of the programming that can be brought in, there's nothing like it anywhere around. It really is one of a kind. We did tour some facilities like this in Ontario. We went to four of them that had a YMCA and a library and a swimming pool and a hockey rink. And that's the way they do it in Canada, but they don't do it here in the States. And we think it's, we think that this could be a model for a lot of other communities to follow.
So one of the concerns I've heard from people, and like Pete, you brought up what a great amenity is, and it definitely is, but for all the people that it would attract Evanston, there are people who are concerned about being priced out. And this project wouldn't, it's a cumulative effect with other things. If we choose to do this, what are some of the things that we are choosing not to do if we want to be as conservative as we can in raising tax revenue? That's kind of, that's a, like, what's your crystal ball saying Erica?
Well, that is all up to the council's discretion. As I talked about in the presentation, we could continue to fund our capital projects at a similar rate that we have in the past. So continue to do things, road resurfacing, other capital projects at other community centers, et cetera. But, you know, capital projects are always a matter of community priority and council discretion. So if there's things that we want to do that we haven't contemplated yet, you know, we can't really project what those might be. But the proposal that we've presented keeps us in a state of constant to where we've been in the past. Except for the one year that we don't have the ability to do any capital.
Alderman, or excuse me, City Manager Bakowitz, do you have something to add?
Just to perhaps take another stab at that. So there's 74 other parks, there's this building, there's police-fire headquarters, there's the remainder of the other community centers. I mean, so there are capital needs there that are probably in excess of $100 million easy. And that's not then talking about the rest of the streets that aren't going to be resurfaced. Not that I'm trying to persuade the council that this is not a critical community need, but your list of critical community needs is pretty long. And so I would hope that as we go down the road and talk about Crown, we talk about libraries, there are many, many other capital projects that are going to need to be grappled with. And I don't believe that raising the property tax is going to be a vehicle for that, the other projects. So I think we will be faced with looking at what we are spending on our annual operations, and we will be faced with looking at what we will no longer be able to afford to do, what salaries will we not be able to pay, what employees will we not be able to have. And that's a real thing. And I plan to come back to you next month to begin the discussion for fiscal '19, because I think we're going to need to begin those reductions now if we're ever going to grapple with the remaining capital issues that we have.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Well, that was certainly sobering, Mr. City Manager. But I think we know that up here on the council. I mean, we deal with that all the time, and that's our job, and we have to make decisions based on what's right for the community. The first thing I want to say is to thank Mr. Jean Greco and thanks to the members, the Friends of Robert Crown. I mean, that was a wonderful presentation and very, very useful. To me, this is the most important project for us to do. I just, I feel so strongly that we need to do something that really serves the entire community and the amount of energy and enthusiasm and use and location and all of those things that come into play make this a project that we need to get behind 100%. My sense is that the Friends of Robert Crown aren't going away, that they're going to hang in there with us. It's, it's a partnership that I wish we had on a number of these other requests that we have from residents about why aren't we taking better care of Harley-Clark, or why aren't we doing this or that? You guys have really stepped up to the plate, big time, and I couldn't be prouder. So thank you for that. Erica, you answered Alderman Saffron's question very well, and, but it, as I said at the beginning, that's really our responsibility to realize that we're going to have to be making decisions about capital projects going forward. But I feel that we need, we need something that energizes and encourages our community that we're making a commitment to the entire community through this project. I've not wavered in my support for it. I've been a little cautious about seeing how it was going to be, how it was going to develop. I think the plan that you've laid out is a little bit hopeful, but doable, as long as we all hang in there together and get it done. So I would encourage my fellow council members to think about it seriously, and, but also, I mean, a huge thanks, not only to our staff, but also Friends of Robert Crown, so, yeah.
Thank you Alderman Fisk. Alderman Wilson.
Thanks. And, you know, the genesis of this, you know, proposal that's on the table, this isn't the first one. We've been through several iterations of different things that didn't work, and we all agreed it couldn't work. And, you know, the idea that was, this was not realistic without a substantial commitment from the community, you know, it was a leap of faith. So, the consultant said $5 million, three to five, and, you know, I and we and others put our faith in the community that they would step up and deliver, and they really have. We have a lot of capital needs, but this is the most heavily used facility in the city. So we might have the luxury of being able to put boards on the windows at Harley-Clark, but that's different. You know, we cannot board up this building. The ice facility, it's on borrowed time, and that's not an exaggeration. It is definitely on borrowed time. And when the equipment fails, you know, I would not be willing to put millions of dollars into restoring equipment in that facility, just to keep, to keep the doors open. So we don't want to be looking, imagine what the park would look like with a shuttered, boarded-up Robert Crown building. Yeah, that's not a pretty picture. So, it is a top priority, it is not free, it is expensive. But again, you know, kind of going back to rethinking how we're going to do these things going forward, this is a better model. Build in how you're going to cover the costs in the future into these revenue generating projects, so that you have a plan for the future, so that you're not neglecting something for decades, and then you've got a crisis. So this is, you know, this is the crisis avoidance plan for the future generation.
Thank you Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said about the presentation tonight on both sides. However, one thing I don't agree with, and that is that the only way to pay for this is to extract the money out of the taxpayers that are, you know, sitting at home trying to figure out how to pay their bills. And for Alderman Fisk and Alderman Nguyen and Alderman Ravel, it's really easy for you to write checks for your tax bill, but it's not easy for everybody else. And one of the ways I would suggest, and also Alderman Wilson, I would really ask you to think about ways to raise revenue in this community. And one of those ways is to think about development in our downtown. You're totally rejecting projects in our downtown that will generate millions and millions of dollars in taxes, that can go to assist us in supporting projects like Robert Crown, that is so necessary. It is absolutely necessary that we build this. I don't need Alderman Wilson to tell me that we can't look at Robert Crown boarded up. Please Alderman Wilson, you don't have to stoop to that. My daughter skated for years in the Nutcracker. You're not going to board up Robert Crown. And there are people in this town who really can't afford these kind of increases. And you know, going out 10 years to have contracts that are going to cover those operating expenses, we're talking about, we're talking about cash flow now. Building that building right now, that's going to be the problem. And I'm going to ask you people to reconsider your absolute refusal to consider these developments in the downtown. That you want to save a couple of alley businesses that absolutely contribute, not one thin dime, to the economy of our community, not one thin dime. There's a person who is writing to all of us saying that the reason they moved to Evanston is because of bookends and beginnings. I'm telling you, that person has absolutely, absolutely no depth to their reason for moving here. I mean, they are really short-sighted. We have to think, those are millions and millions of dollars we're losing in tax revenue. And you're asking people who live on Dobson and Howard Street and on Emerson and on Gray Avenue and on all your streets to foot the bill for this when we have other ways to support this kind of project? We have, we really have to rethink that. So I'm not, until, until we think about how we're going to support this, other than soaking our community, you know, those who can afford to contribute a half a million dollars to support Robert Crown, until we can think of other ways, instead of adding $100 to tax bills, $200, $300, I, you know, nothing I want more than a beautiful Robert Crown. I think we're going to have to really think of how we look at, especially, especially the North Light Theater project, right in the center of our downtown, right where a tall building belongs. It's a beautiful thing. I just heard Pete say, you know, we're going to have need for more hotel rooms. That's going to be half a hotel. That's where we can put some of these wonderful teams that are going to come to town.
Thank you Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
I have several questions. So, my first one, I guess, maybe Director Hemingway, can you answer? Because I have some programming questions, if that's okay, about Robert Crown. Being that I'm one of the families that don't have skaters and don't ever really go into the building. So with this beautiful new space we're talking about, what is going to increase with the program? So I know that there's going to be the preschool, which I do understand is not bigger, so we're not bringing in more kids there if I'm correct. We'll have the walking track, is that going to be a fee? I mean, what else can people like me who don't necessarily have skaters do in Robert, in the new Robert Crown?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bakowitz, and members of council. Alderman Fleming, to answer your question, so yes, you brought up a walking track. So a walking track will be over one of the two full ice rinks, but programmatically, the way the current building, we don't have classroom space, the way we currently operate, to provide classes such as, you know, fitness and wellness classes to the community. Our gymnasium, you know, gets used after 6:00 PM because it is unaccessible because of our preschool and the license that's associated with it from the state of Illinois. So we do programs in the gymnasium, you know, we rent it for indoor soccer, we do some basketball, we do some fitness classes, but now we're going to have a dedicated fitness classroom for health and wellness that can run classes at 6:00 AM throughout the day, throughout, you know, over lunchtime. There's increased capacity in terms of our arts and, our arts and social classes as well. We're looking at an arts room that we can now bring mom and tots in during the early morning hours. We can provide after-school programs in this arts classroom that would be dedicated for increased programmatic, you know, usage, and as well as the entire outdoor facility as well. So we'll be able to increase our capacity of current kinds of uses. So right now you have programs outdoors, you can, with the, with the current configuration of the design, we'll be able to increase capacity, which increases revenue to our facility. We'll now have access to our gymnasium at 6:00 AM in the morning, so we can do 6:00 AM basketball that's generating revenue. Once the school comes in, they run their activities, we can continue to split the gym in half and run volleyball on one side and another league or some kind on a different side. We don't have those opportunities the way the current building is configured. So there's lots of room for growth. A parent such as yourself, you know, if you want to come in, depending on what your interest is, our new programming offerings from health and wellness classes to fitness classes, to a walking track around, to mothers with young children, I mean, we can now welcome all those new individuals into the facility.
Okay, and Mr. Jean Greco mentioned, I'm assuming he's meaning in the future, the lunch for kids, because we talked about this during the snow days where Robert Crown is the accessible building for kids in South Evanston, and it's, as you say, limited. So I'm looking forward to you all doing some more things for the middle schoolers there particularly. I have a question now for Erica, thank you. So given, given aggressive tax plan that we'd have to get here, and building off of what Alderman Rainey said, we would need to get this project started like tomorrow. I can't remember what your date up there was, but at what point do we need to do the bond to stay on target to open in 2019?
Well, tonight, we're looking for a direction on whether or not there's consensus to proceed with the project, because next week at the City Council meeting, we'll be asking for an approval of the construction manager contract. We did an RFP last fall, we got several bids, now we would want to award that contract. That essentially greenlights the project and starts it moving forward. So, that would be what we were, our next course of action would be. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes, I guess I was hoping it was further along, but, okay, so my next question is, I mean, I obviously don't want to go back to the taxpayers with another $100, given what they had with the district last year, and that there's such instability with the state, you know, budget process. But with this, the way you have it laid out here, if we went for it with the plan you projected, so we have a $100 increase for 2019, and then we go down for 2020 to the increase of, I'm sorry, I just lost my number here, $67 or so? So over the next two years, and we're looking at almost a $200 increase?
Yeah, those are assumptions based on a $400,000 price point of a home or assessed value. And your earlier question was about when do we need to actually sell these bonds and when would the construction start? If the project does move forward, if there is a consensus, we would look to start construction over the summer. So we would have to sell those additional bonds, probably towards the summer or early fall. But what you stated about the, the almost $200, that's correct for a homeowner.
At the $400,000 range. Okay, and I have one more question for Director Lyons, or someone from the library team. So, given what we now have presented with Robert Crown and the fact that there is also a library branch in Robert Crown that will cost about $2.5 million, can you just, I guess, give a little more justification why we should move forward with two libraries, projects at one time, in addition to what you mentioned already about the main Chicago branch that you would want to keep open through 2019, and then possibly either continue to open or move somewhere else? I mean, can you just kind of give me something more? I mean, I saw the beautiful pictures and what you want to do, but given that, as the City Manager mentioned, we have a lot of capital needs, and again, thank you for people on my ward who can or cannot access the main library based on location and transportation issues, the Robert Crown branch makes much more sense for me, being that it's more central. And so I'm having a hard time reconciling a $2.5 million library here, $10 million into the downtown, and a branch library in Chicago and Maine. So is there something I'm missing, I guess, in just the grand scheme of why we either can't postpone the main library, or, I guess postpone the main library would be my question? can't postpone the main library, or I guess postpone the main library would be my question?
I'll start with Robert Crown. It fills a service gap that we have over there. When we do our community conversations and when we talk about barriers to service, transportation and accessibility and proximity are all part of why I've been recommending and the board has agreed to place a branch library at Robert Crown. It fills a definite service gap I have there. The main library is, is our engine for our library service. It's got the most square footage under roof that we can repurpose to meet the community needs, especially around digital literacy learning and a team space. When you look at some of the other projects that I mentioned in our surrounding library communities, they've had to build additions, they've done new construction, we're repurposing what we have under roof. And so it's a very effective use of the construction and renovation dollars. It's a, it's a big ask. I'm asking to consider investment in the community, investment in all of the community. And I will never be able to completely replicate the services I do at the main library at Robert Crown. It's going to come closer than any of my other branches because of the community rooms, because this will be the first branch constructed to be a branch. And so we've got community rooms, we've got study rooms, we'll have a stronger Wi-Fi, and the proximity to, the convenience for our families makes it a very attractive addition in my mind, and I think the communities to Robert Crown. You're asking me to choose between children. So there are needs in both, there are needs in the main library. My main library is not crumbling, it's not leaking. This is not to create a new, to replace something that's crumbling like what we're seeing at Robert Crown. But this is a true investment in equitable service in students and adults and learning that because of the square footage and the capacity of the staff in the main library, it takes that library and our service into the future on a very different scale. I can't tell you which to choose. I hope that in the discussions going ahead, we can find a way to do both. It becomes a question of timing and it becomes a question of price. Our CAM, Chicago Avenue Main Street, is the only location that we rent right now. And as I mentioned, that lease expires in 2019, depending on where we're at with Robert Crown, and watching how our residents do or don't access Robert Crown, then we would be having a different kind of a conversation and different decisions around Chicago Avenue Main Street.
Okay. Couple of lights were on, but now off. Alderman, when, did you have anything? Okay. Alderman, Ruth Simmons, did you want to say anything? Okay, Alderman Rainey?
I wanted to clarify, the hundred dollar on the average home, the additional tax, that's on the Robert Crown bonding. There could be other issues. For example, there could be a pension addition based on whatever happens with pension. In 2019, there could be other increases, maybe union situations. City manager? I'm not sure. There could be other expenditures, maybe a lawsuit, et cetera. Is that not true?
The city's always facing new challenges.
Yeah, it's fluid. So, I mean, we're just talking about one increase with the hundred dollars.
Well, but as Ms. Storley indicated, though, she has built in, in these, these models, similar increases we've seen over the last several years. So it would be funding a, a capital budget level to what we have been paying. It will fund the increases we've seen for police and fire pensions. So I think that's, that's an appropriate modeling there. But again, on the capital side, I think you're all aware that the money we have been spending is not sufficient for our capital needs citywide. So these are all choices. We have the ability to contract our, our operating costs and our wages, and that's all within the abilities of the, the city to adjust. So my guess, this is a larger conversation moving forward, because we're going to need to address these other capital issues as well as the important issue of Robert Crown.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not just talking about capital issues. I'm talking about the hundred dollars on the tax bill. People on this council have been through at least one or two budgets, at least. So I think they all have seen where nobody, unless Erica Storley is the newest, most brilliant human being on the face of this earth, who is able to project a single number that the tax bill is going to, she's going to be able to project exactly what that tax bill is going to increase by. And while I think she's just the most perfect assistant city manager ever, I don't think that we can say that that's exactly what we're going to be seeing. So that the tax bill is not just going to increase by one hundred dollars, and that's the point I'm making.
And, and Mr. Mayor Alderman Rainey, Ms. Storley, maybe we can put up one of the slides that you had, I think, if we can go to what you were projecting, the 20--
Nineteen.
Nineteen levy would have, would be, or the twenty, that's the one. So the 14.5% increase to the debt service levy includes the dollars needed for Crown. The 1% increase to the general city levy is the funds that would be akin to what we have increased it in previous years. The 410,000 dollar increase, as you know, reflects the council's direction to shift those costs from rate payers to the property tax. The 1% increase to a library operations levy, again, separate from capital, is akin to what they have seen in previous years. And then the 1.3% increase to the police and fire pension levy. So I think those numbers are all, you know, track with what we have spent previously. The, the city council over, certainly the last eight years that I have been here, has looked to not increase the, the property tax for general, general operations. So the only time we've up, increased the property tax has been for capital debt purposes and police and fire pension. Clearly, our police and fire pension issues are better than they were, but they have not gone away. Our, although, as debt still exists, the shift to add the solid waste levy to the property tax is new, and that's not something we had done previously. So, you know, I, I think this is all about priorities. This is all about what do we need to do to invest in our community? And clearly, as you have all mentioned, many of you mentioned, Robert Crown is at the top of the list. I just wish that it was the only thing on the list, but it's not.
Alderman, Ruth Simmons?
And, and to add to that, that's just the City of Evanston line item on the--
The status quo.
On, on the tax bill. And--
Correct.
From what I remember seeing last, we have the Cook County property tax sale happening very soon, and we have at least dozens, maybe there were hundreds, of vulnerable households that are on that list right now. So we have to continue discussion on looking at ways to avoid property tax increases. And then in addition, that 2023 no CIP improvements, that's just absolutely unrealistic. If we're averaging nine million dollars now on necessary improvements, I just don't see a year where we say we do nothing, especially based on our infrastructure, the age and the usage of our facilities here. So that's something that, I don't see that as an option. So when do we discuss, like, have a real discussion about this?
Well, that's what we're here to do tonight.
Okay.
It will continue. One, one point I wanted to make about the, the 2023 year without the capital. It does buy us time to identify other direct funding sources for Robert Crown, and it also buys us time to actually understand how the center will operate and if the revenue projections are on target, are below target, or above target. So if the center performs well, because we anticipate the utilization to be extremely high, we may have additional revenue coming in that we can put towards capital needs in the future. It also gives us time to prepare and come up with an alternate plan, so that if the council desires to avoid not doing any capital in that year, we can plan for it and come up with another way to fund it.
As I understand your projections and stuff, right now, you've got, the way you built this model, 11 million or so for Friends of Crown, but if Friends of Crown deliver 15 million, that's 4 million dollars, so to speak, in the black, that we are, that we can put towards, you know, the debt right away. If we, you know, find out that the operating costs, the net increase over what it was, you know, previously under the existing Crown is greater than you think, we can put that towards paying down the debt quicker. If, you know, this council were to move forward and, you know, decide to sell the library parking lot for 4 million dollars, it could decide to put that 4 million dollars towards this new asset, so to speak, to the, to the community. So I mean, I, I think that, you know, I mean, I've looked at your model and sat down with you and everything, and I like the conservative projections that you've put in it, but I do think that it means for, you know, the council that we do have to take a serious look at, you know, revenue and expenses and our assets. And, you know, what do big corporations do, you know, when they look at their assets? They say, well, should we reallocate these assets in some way? And the library parking lot is an example of that, which is an asset the city has, but if they opt to say, hey, we're going to put a commercial building up there, that's 4 million dollars, and I personally think that 4 million ought to be put towards another city asset such as Crown that is benefiting Evanston. So Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to follow up on something Alderman Simmons said in terms of looking at this holistically. I'm looking at that number there, the library tax levy, and I'm assuming that doesn't include the renovations for the larger library project. Am I looking at that correctly?
That is correct. If, if the council direction was to do both projects current year, we feel that would put us at risk of decreasing our bond rating, because we would have an excessive amount of debt.
So am I to interpret by not seeing this, the library levy, levy underneath the 14, the 1%, the 410, the 1% that staff is basically saying that we wouldn't do the library?
Staff's not saying that, we're looking for a direction from the council.
I mean, I'm asking the question, it isn't there, so there's got to be a reason why it isn't there.
Because this is just this project.
Two separate projects that have an impact to our taxpayers. So why wouldn't we, I said it before, I'm waiting for the slide that sees them side to side. I mean--
As, as the mayor brought up, if we were to contemplate doing the Crown project this year, when would we be able to do the library renovation? It's 10 million dollars. We would have to wait at least two years--
Okay.
--before we could potentially do the, the main library renovation. And that is a time which we could then come back to you with a better plan for how to fund it, without having to add any addition to the tax levy this current year, or having to risk a reduction in our bond rating.
And Alderman Braithwaite, members of the council, Bill Stafford is here. I think you are all aware that he has been helping us over the last month, six weeks at time, looking at things. Maybe, Bill, could you come up and, and talk about this concept of bond rating? I think that, for those who don't know, Bill, he is a former City of Evanston Finance Director, former District 202 Finance Director, former Chair of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, former Board Member, I think, of the GFOA, President of the Oakton Community College District, a man who's been around government finance for a few days in his career. So, Bill, with all that said, you know, what's your take on the issue of, of bond ratings? Because I think the, there's an unnecessary competition here that's been, been created, pitting Robert Crown versus main library renovations. And I, and I think perhaps some perspective on bond ratings and debt at this point may be useful.
Yeah. Again, you've got some complex issues here. I think the, I think the big issue here is, look, if, if we go to the bond houses and ask for the Robert, Robert Crown money, again, in terms of our size and that, that's a push. It's a large, it's a large project. However, the bond houses are going to be more than impressed with the fact that you have citizens who've been out there raising those kinds of dollars. That's a big deal. I, I think we'd keep our bond rating, I think we'd be in pretty good shape. But then you have to think about the logistics of it, and, and let's talk a little bit about the difference between that vis a vis the library issue. One of the things we did on this, when we put these, these projects together is, and the financing for this has looked at a couple of things. One, you got a short construction deadline. Two, you got, you got, you know, 10 million, for the, for the assumptions here, we put in 10 million that you had in pledged donations, and you have construction that need to be done in two years. We still have, as one of the Aldermen said, historically low rates in terms of, in terms of money. So it's a good time to go out. You've got a major commitment of donated public funds, but they're going to come in over eight years, so we really have to front load these dollars. The city is going to have to provide those monies upfront, because you've got a quick construction project. So you've got to do that. And then the construction numbers now, we have to be, appear to be in line with the managers' feedback we got from the construction managers, so that's good. We've made some conservative assumptions here, okay? And part of the conservative assumptions are that, again, they're going to raise 10 million dollars. Well, if we raise another 5 million dollars, that helps, okay, in terms of the future of cities able to, to provide money. Secondly, we've got, we put no revenues in for bonds from Crown Center. We're going to have to find out what happens at Crown and see how the operations go there and what kind of dollars we're getting there and generate that. And then thirdly, there is a small refinance we can do, it'll pick up maybe another 150,000, which translates to 2 million bonds. So there's potentially 9 to 11 million dollars that we don't know about and aren't going to know about for two years. I would submit to you that you really, A, if you, we go to the market, we should go to the market with the Crown deal, that's a big deal with the citizens. But B, if you're going to consider a library project, I would wait. I think you logistically have to wait for two years to see how it settles in terms of the operations there, in terms of the money that's available, and in terms of what you've gotten in from the citizens. I don't really see those being done together. I think you're going to have bond issues if they're, if they are. And I'm just telling you from a logistical point of view, aside from whether I like Crown or whether I like libraries, you know, I, I used to be a hockey skater from Detroit and I liked to read, but I'm just telling you, aside from that, I think you have logistical issues. So I think, I think, I think the Crown works for a lot of different reasons in terms of going to the bond market. B, I think you got to wait in terms of where that all settles before you can go back out in terms of that, that, that other project. Hopefully, that answers--
That does. It addresses a lot of my concern.
Thank you, Bill. Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. And I think, maybe most of us are thinking this way, the library project is certainly of value, but I do think that the, the obvious rational thing to do is to defer on that. You know, I don't like that level of risk. And, you know, again, we've gotten this, this big fundraising campaign gone, undertaken in outstanding results. And if we, you know, I can't imagine we wouldn't proceed, but if for some reason we didn't, that money goes away, cost isn't going to go down at all, and we're going to have to pay for it at some point, so it'll cost us a minimum 11 million dollars more, because we won't have that in our pockets. And I'm sure it would be, you know, I don't know if we can get the money for this, for these kinds of rates in, in a few years, in any event. So, you know, we've planned for this, we've been talking about it for a long time, and, you know, I think the community expectation is that we're going to finally get this thing done.
Okay. Alderman Rainey?
I can see no reason why a contribution to the Crown Center construction can't be a public benefit for developments. I see no reason why that can't be a public benefit. I mean, do you? I mean, I'm looking at you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, there's no reason why it couldn't be. I mean, it is a public benefit. And if all, if all, if all developers were asked to make a public benefit to the Crown project, I mean, it's a, it's a citywide facility. And that way, people like Alderman Fisk couldn't say that Alderman were snatching up public benefits for their own use. It would be a public benefit, a citywide public benefit. We were adding more population to, you know, in a building-- We were adding more population to, you know, in a building, and it would be a citywide use. I mean, I could see 601 Davis paying $1 million and the Sherman Avenue project paying $1 million as a public benefit.
So, I think, I don't want to get, I don't want to get off track because I know this council...
No, but I'm talking about relieving the taxpayers.
I understand, I understand. I mean, my, believe me, people have heard me talk ad nauseam, and I think a lot of people up here understand that, you know, our tax, our property taxes are high, okay, in Evanston. Now, people get a lot of great things, and that's why they choose to live here in Evanston, but we have to continue in a smart and a sensible way to have strong economic development and development here in this community. And so, you know, there are going to be, you know, differences that people have on projects at times, and I thought your point was a really good one, Alderman Rainey, that you raised earlier, because it just highlights the connection that does exist between the conversation that we're having today and development in our community, which sometimes takes up a lot of time on this council agenda.
It's called revenue and expenses.
I get it. I get, I absolutely, I get it.
Glad you do because some people on this council don't get it.
Well, I think, I think we have a good council, and I think people do. I think people, I think people do understand, and I think like this good conversation that we're having, we're approaching two and a half hours, is actually been a really refreshing conversation, at least from my perspective, because this council's really gotten an opportunity to talk about these things. We've got a few other lights on, so let's go to Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, thank you very much for the just straightforward explanation that helps me to process what we're being asked to do this evening, and I will share from the discussion that I've benefited from. I don't feel like we have enough information to make, I don't, excuse me, I'll speak for myself. I don't feel like I have enough information to roll the dice on a tax increase, just to be honest with you. I agree with Alderman Rainey, based on the residents that I have in my ward, particularly our seniors, the issue of property taxes, especially given what we have going on in the national scene is very confusing, particularly to our seniors. I think there are some other issues that require additional conversation before I would make a vote to move in that direction. I think there is a real conversation to have regarding our relationship with our developers and projects that are happening in real time, and I think that has a huge impact on our tax base and could potentially be a second source of funding for Crown. And I think the mayor, you mentioned this, and I don't think you suggested it, but I think it's, it is a conversation worth exploring, the selling of public property. And the last time, whether it's Harley Clark or the other assets that we've discussed, it is a very, very heated conversation to have. And I think if we're talking about Crown being the asset that it is, I think that that's something that should also be put on the table. So, I, I'm just going to speak for myself, and I don't feel comfortable right now suggesting increasing taxing our residents in this town without having those conversations, to be honest with the members of council.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll bite on what Alderman Rainey threw out. I try not to, but in this case, I will, because I don't want to mislead the public. I mean, the discussion about public benefits is, they're related to our planned developments, is a very specific discussion that I'm sure that we will be having at Planning and Development at some time in the future, but this is not the place really to be having that discussion. I do think it's important for us tonight to give staff the direction to go ahead with this project. It's an extremely important project for our community. And I find that Robert Crown is basically unusable now. I mean, it's, it's almost, and it has been, an embarrassment for several years. Not long after it was constructed, and I remember going over there with my son when the Blackhawks came, and God, that must have been a few years after it was built, they were practicing there, you know, for some reason. Even then, there were problems with the structural integrity of the building because of the subsoil. I think I've told some of you guys that my dad played semi-pro baseball, he used to play on those fields. That used to be the field where ice was cut. I mean, it's basically a bog. And, and so, it's, it's important that we redo this project, that we create a city asset that's going to be built correctly, that we're using this, this space as a, an asset to the entire community, and that's what I think is so exciting for this. I can't see putting this off. I think if we put it off, we're going to basically undermine the entire project. I really don't want to do that right now. The library, I think we can wait for a couple of years, and I would support doing that, but I think we really do need to move ahead with Robert Crown right now.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Ravel?
Well, I won't really jump into the public benefit discussion, but just to mention that if we want developers to come up with more millions of dollars, I'd like to see it go into our Affordable Housing Fund. I would love to be able to go ahead with the library project, but I'm reluctantly persuaded that we should wait a couple of years. And I hesitate to have us wait much longer to get the additional information that we seem that some of us would like to have to go ahead with the, move forward with Robert Crown, because if we delay, then there's going to be no way we're going to meet the fall 2019 deadline when we really need to have that project finished so that the entities that have made these pledges will be able to use the property and fulfill their pledges, and that's just critical for the success of the project as a whole. So, in terms of our needing to give direction to staff, I'm saying let's go ahead and be ready to consider whatever we're going to be considering next week.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Wing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I am, as you all heard, one of the biggest proponents of improving the library building, but we can't risk our bond rating. You know, that's our lifeline. And so, very reluctantly, I would have to agree that we have to push the library back. Robert Crown has been an issue almost the entire time I've been on the city council. And when I think about that building, I think about the old parking garage on Sherman Avenue, which gradually, we had to shut it down floor by floor by floor, and then the elevator didn't work anymore. And, and we came up with a solution to that. I think, Robert Crown is a building that we have been holding together, and I don't want to put perfectly good money after bad there. We need to move forward with Robert Crown. And unfortunately, the library is going to have to wait. You know, I say it very reluctantly, but we have to do Robert Crown. We can't wait on that. I mean, we have all of this pledged money, interest rates are low, these are very conservative estimates. We need to move forward with that. We need to get into the ground.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Rusevsky?
Thank you. So, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said. We do need to move forward with Robert Crown and wait on the library. And again, I love the library, and it hurts to say that, but I'm actually really excited to hear how much, how much Robert Crown is considering communities that have not been served properly. And I was unaware of how strong and important the programming is going to be there and just how substantial the library services are going to be there. So, it only seems responsible to wait on the main branch. But still, I don't know what that will do for our taxes. I feel like that's still a topic that we aren't discussing. And then, does staff, have you come with any report or recommendation on assets that we've had? I've heard us talk about assets that we have or any other revenue generating activities that can offset this cost. It seems inappropriate to recommend a move forward, and we're recommending a move forward from what we see now that shows no capital improvement in five years and a tax increase. So, is that what we're, that's what we would be moving forward now if we gave recommendation to move forward as it's been presented? Because that seems insufficient at this point.
Alderman Rusevsky, members of the council, we have this on for discussion this evening. We felt that it was important that the council have a full airing of all these issues because next week we're coming back to you with really the, the starting line of the project, and that's the hiring of the construction manager. Financing issues remain something that the council can continue to talk about. We're looking at $1.5 million that we would need to generate in next year's budget to cover the debt service. The staff has put forward a model which is entirely property tax. You just had a budget where you came up with $6 million in order to balance the budget. So, in the whole scheme of our world, $1.5 million is something that certainly can be talked about and could be a mix of revenue raising from other places. It could be a mix of expense reductions, and I'm going to be coming back to the council at your meeting on February, March 19th to begin talking about the process for the 2019 budget. So, I think there's plenty of time to talk about this. Nothing on the financing side is set in stone. We just did not want to come to you next week and ask for you to approve a construction manager in order to get the project out to bid, awarded, and construction starting without having this fuller discussion.
Well, if we're going to approve a construction management, that we're moving forward still with all these questions unanswered. So, I don't know what part I'm missing, but at what point do we have a solid plan on financing it?
Well, you've heard the solid plan, Alderman Rusevsky, member of the council this evening. This is the solid plan. We're hearing from many of you that you would like us to continue to work on the solid plan, and so we will continue to work on the solid plan. I'm confident that we can find other ways to make up a portion of that $1.5 million, and I think we would have the next nine months to talk about that. Again, the city council came up with $6 million, and I would dare say that we did not impact the community in a harsh way in doing that. So, but the plan is what we have before you, that it would be a property tax increase with the numbers that you see. If that's something that is absolutely not something that you feel comfortable with, given all the other conversations about the needs, the capital needs for this facility, then the direction would be that we stop. If you think that this is something we can continue to move forward with, then we come to you next Monday evening with the construction manager. We hope that you'll approve it.
I have to be honest, I'm kind of, yeah, I'm really frustrated with the all or none, and I'm not saying that that's what you're doing, but I'm really frustrated with the all or none approach that we're taking here. I think that there's some serious things to be discussed. We've talked about the development. We've talked about the possible sale of assets, and I don't feel comfortable with, we either increase taxes or we don't have a Robert Crown. And I think that's, that's the, that's what I'm hearing right now tonight. And I didn't come prepared to make a decision to increase our property taxes that's going to, like, hold us hostage on future capital projects in all of our wards that affect all of our residents. So, I just had to get that out. Because I'm a little bit frustrated right now.
And again, the way, the way that the city has presented this to us is what the increase to the property tax levy would be, you know, if the budget were the same and if you had these increases, historical increases that you've had, there are, you know, different alternatives. You could say, you know what? No, I'm going to find $1.5 million of reductions. I found $6 million, you guys all, you know, together agreed on $6 million last year. But we do have a situation where the construction management contract is coming here. I did ask city staff, I said, "We need to have this conversation. The council needs to see all, see all these numbers and have a conversation." It does not mean that at the end of this year that you don't get to that $1.5 million because of the additional debt that they'd have to take on through a property tax levy. You could get there in a different, in a different way, and that is a conversation that we can't solve right now, given the timeline that we're working on, under because of, you know, this whole community effort that we've embarked on with Friends of, Friends of Crown. So, we've got lots of lights up here. Alderman Wilson.
Thanks. And I didn't take it as an all or nothing at all. You know, this, this is a presentation, but the basic premise here is that we have hard choices to make, and we have also opportunities. So, Alderman Rainey's right, there might be opportunities for future developments that are, that are being floated and that are under consideration. These are all things that we're going to be looking at over the next year. So, as we go through from this point forward, there are opportunities to improve what this looks like. But at some point, you have to pull the trigger. You have to make a decision on whether you're doing it or not. So, we're at a point where it's been planned for now, a lot of work has been done, the fundraising has exceeded its target, and if it doesn't get done, then we're not going to meet the targets. So, you're going to lose the $11 million. So, it's, you know, you're presenting it as this all or nothing, but you've been here for years and years and years and years. So, you've been part of this planning process. Most of us have been. Some of you are new, some of you haven't been, but this has been considered the entire time I've been on the council, eight years. It's not like we just kind of came up with this. You know, infinite numbers of hours have been spent coming up with a decent plan, and this is. I would like to improve what the math looks like on this, but we need to make a decision and proceed. That's what we have to do. We have to take a step and start getting this done. And if that, you know, if some of you think we should do it doing X, some of, you know, doing Y, I didn't like the idea of adding, of subsidizing waste pickup with, with tax increases. We ended up choosing to do that. So, there are things that we can look at that can impact in a positive way the tax burden, but we have to make hard decisions to get there. But we need to make a decision on whether or not we're supporting this really important series of segments in our community. People need and use this center. Pete did a great presentation on the vast array of things. We pass out food, we pass out lunches, we, you know, it's endless. Thousands and thousands and thousands of people go through this property every week. And, you know, we can't, can't blow that off.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rainey?
We can't blow it off, and I'm, I'm willing to let this go to the council, but I'll tell you what, I'm also going to work as hard as I possibly can to get the Farpoint project to come to the council, to come to Planning and Development, and to get those people who are out there supporting the Robert Crown Center. I'm supporting it. I contributed a measly amount because I want to show my support for it, but I don't support placing the burden on the backs of taxpayers who can't afford to support it any more than they already do through their, you know, participation in it and their, their regular tax paying. So, we need you to get out there and, and help with other means of support for, for this project. Nobody comes out to support, you know, other means of revenue for this city. Nobody. We have, you know, a group of 20 people out there telling us it's going to destroy this city as we know it, and we know that's not true. So, and Alderman on the council, we need another source of revenue. It's a beautiful project. We need people to come and support the good project downtown and the good project that is known as Robert Crown New Construction. So, I'm going to support getting it to the council, but I want all this information. Those of you out there, we've never seen this before. I've never seen this before. I don't know if all of you have seen it.
Nope.
I mean, we got a few, I saw a few pieces of paper at 2:00 this afternoon, but I've never seen this. So, I mean, you know, ask me to figure out, you know, a levy, you know, the tax increase today and the tax increase tomorrow. I mean, it's very hard, and I have a pretty good mind for this kind of stuff. But get it to us tomorrow. And now, you know, I mean, I really do need this because I have got, also, I want to know 601 Davis and the Farpoint, well, we don't have those numbers yet, but if 601 Davis were to have come in, given their projected numbers, how it would affect the taxes in conjunction with this project. I want to see that balance. We never even allowed 601 Davis... We never even allowed 601 Davis to get to the city council.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fisk?
Alderman Rainey, that statement is just driving a wedge in the community. I just cannot tell you how angry that makes me that you would, that you would suggest that Farpoint come here to advocate for Robert Crown and set...
I didn't suggest that.
What, well, what...
I suggested that the Robert Crown supporters advocate for Farpoint.
All right. I think, again, that's driving a wedge in the community. That's just totally unacceptable. I'm just, you...
If they support, if they support, if they don't support it, don't come. Sorry.
It's a really bad idea.
I need help. I need help.
It's a really bad idea. And I understand that you want that development and other developments in the downtown, but there is a process.
You are not, don't, I know you're not going to support it, so...
There is, there is a process that we follow. And that process is not going to a developer and suggesting that a developer give money for a specific project in Evanston. When we have a public benefit part of our zoning ordinance that's so specific when we are discussing plan developments, this is just not what we should be talking about at this point in the council when we're talking about a project like Robert Crown.
Come to our next meeting on the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Come to our next meeting. It's going to be part of our plan.
All right. Now, let's get back to...
That's fine.
Focusing on the direction we're giving our city staff.
Okay. So, again, my recommendation is let's just, let's make a decision on this based on this. We can have a discussion about development at the appropriate time and the appropriate location, but suggesting and whipping up, whipping up the sentiment in the community, again, to drive a wedge in the community is just such a bad idea. Please don't do that.
Thank you. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask your patience. I hear you saying that, you know, you've exhausted this discussion, Alderman Wilson, and that it's been discussed for however long, Alderman Wen. But this is a new discussion for me. And you're asking for my direction to move forward, and I've talked about vulnerable residence taxes and that sort of thing. So, I have more questions. Wally, you said 1.5 million dollars, and that doesn't intimidate me. I'm sure we can figure out a way. What does that do, though, to the burdens that we've talked about when we come up with that?
Well, Alderman Rue Simmons, members of the council, it's up to you to decide where that million and a half dollars would come from. We could reduce expenditures by a million and a half dollars, and so there would be no increased burden. But there would be an impact on the services we're no longer providing. So, you'd have to weigh that. It could be a mix of things. It could be, we'll see what the Uber and Lyft fees do, and, you know, maybe perhaps that's something we look at. It's really, there's lots of, lots of ways to do this. It's really up to all of you to provide your staff direction and we'll come back to you with whatever makes sense. But, as has been said multiple times, we're at a decision point. And we needed to share with you what we thought the real costs were. We needed to share with you what we thought was a plan to pay for all of this, and that's what we've done tonight. Again, next week, we're coming to you with a construction manager. So, that person's job will be to work with the city staff and the architects to prepare plans and specifications to go out to bid for a project. That will be a period of time, I don't know, a month, six weeks at least, to go through that process. Once the plans and specs are issued, the council would approve the plans and specs going out. It would approve then the construction contract. So, there are still multiple decision points ahead of you. This is not an up or down tonight on a project, but we are embarking on some serious decision making, starting, you are embarking on decision, serious decision making, starting next week.
Right. Because we're finally embarking on the decision making and revolving how we're going to fund it.
And actually, starting, we've already paid for architects and engineers, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars, Erica? So, we've already spent $500,000 on architects and engineers to get us to the point we're at. So, this is, this is now, we've got, we've got the car, we're ready to take it out for a drive.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Erica, I would like numbers if we're going to continue this discussion. I would like numbers so that if the purchase price of the library parking lot is incorporated into the planning, how that would affect, I don't need them right now, but I think by, by next week, that would be helpful to have that.
I can prepare those for next week. And I just want to make one more point of clarification. The scenario that we presented was basically your worst-case scenario, should the council decide not to do any other revenue raising, et cetera. So, I think Wally described it pretty well. If we come up with proposals, ideas, et cetera, for some other way to fund this project, the tax increase is not in play, separate and apart from those tax increases that have already been contemplated for solid waste, for pension, et cetera.
You don't want, okay, Alderman, so many lights on here, and Alderman Fleming?
I think I share maybe the same concern as Alderman Rue Simmons, and so I'm going to try to phrase it, maybe in a way that maybe gets to the answer. I think that she's looked at the answer, this is what I'm looking for. So, I asked Ms. Shirley about when we would have to go to bond, right? Because now we're talking about next week approving the construction manager, which obviously we don't want to do if we're not going to move forward, right? So, at what point do we need to go to bond? Or maybe this is a Mr. Stafford question, because in my mind, and maybe I'm incorrect, when we go to bond, we are then essentially saying we are going to extend this tax levy to our citizen base the next year, right? Because I'm looking at this number for the bonding amount to be $23,750, is that correct according to this?
23 million.
Yes. Thank you. 23 million. Right. And so, if we're going to go borrow that, we have to pay that back.
Correct. And part of this proposal is the fact that when we go to sell those bonds, we need to have a story to tell as to how we're going to fund paying back those bonds.
Right.
So, while we still have time to consider other options, we're going to need to sell these bonds by the summer, and we're going to need to tell the people who will be buying these bonds how we expect to pay them back. And so, that is how...
Right. And so, your proposal right now, we're going to tell them we're going to increase our tax levy.
We still have time to have that conversation.
We still have time, but I mean, if we are doing it tomorrow, that's what we have on the board.
Yes.
Okay. And so, how much time do we have to come up with alternate solution or revenue base or whatever? How much time before we need to go, before we're at the point of saying, okay, it's going to go on the tax bill?
I think we have at least three months to have those conversations.
Okay. Well, and the tax bill, Alderman Fleming, is, is the end of November.
Right. I understand that. But I know that, I'm assuming we can't go to the county, state in October and say, you know, no, don't print the tax bills. You know, I'm just trying to look at the timing, right? So, we're talking about all these other scenarios, development, X, Y, and Z of how we can bring in this revenue. I would like to know how much time we have to make those decisions and do those things before we go to the taxpayers. Because like Alderman Rue Simmons is saying, it's, I, Robert Crown, yes, we need to redo it. I'm having a hard time in one night moving forward thinking we're going to do that with a $100 tax increase without, for me, as a first time on the council, knowing the amount of time at which I say, hey, let's sell the 1,400 block of Clark, Kirk Street, I mean, whatever I came up with, when I need to do that. That's what I'm trying to get at. So, we have three months?
Before the 4th Monday in November.
Can I ask a related question? If we go, if we go and bond and say that, you know, we're going to use an increase in property tax levy, okay, to pay the interest and the principal off of these bonds, do we have the right to then change it and say, you know what, actually, we're not. We're going to reduce our expenses and just use that reduction in expenses to pay off these bonds? Is there any kind of contractual issue that we have?
No, you can still do that. We do that now because you, I mean, we've issued GO bonds and we abate those with sewer revenues, okay? And so, I mean, that's how we financed almost all of the sewer project. Yeah. And you have, I mean, logistically, you really do, I mean, back to Wally's point, it really does come to be part of the budget. The fact that you issue bonds, let's say you issue bonds in May, okay, the first payment on those is not going to be due until after the 1st of the year, okay? So, the point is, is that, and you're able to abate, you can actually abate bonds into January if you want, but Wally's right in terms of the schedule, you'd want to have a good feel for it in October, but you can go as late as December to abate the bonds. So, you could literally issue, you know, the 1.5 million or whatever that number is for that year. When you issue the bonds, that's going to be in the bond ordinance, but then you can always go back and abate. And if Wally says it's part of the, you know, budget process, you come up with a half a million dollars and you go, you abate another half a million dollars. So, you've got time. The fact is, when you issue the bonds, you're, what you're committing to is we will definitely pay those with the property taxes, but we can reduce that amount, and you're allowed to do that. So, you'll have plenty of time to do that, and probably through your budget process.
All right. Thank you. So, that was very clear for me. Thank you very much. Because, again, I want to move forward. I don't want to hold this up any further, but if I have to commit tonight to moving forward with a $100 tax increase, I can't do that, given Alderman Rainey had at 2:00, I had my meeting at 6:00. So, given that I've had three hours to think about this.
Maybe think about it, and I don't know if this is fair to say it this way, think about it, that if the council moves forward with the new Crown, we are going to have a one and a half million dollar deficit. How do we, how do we, you know, fill that deficit? Do we reduce our expenditures, okay, elsewhere in the city? Do we increase our tax levy, okay, which is a tax increase? Do we sell some assets and therefore reduce, you know, the actual debt, you know, outstanding debt service that we have? So, those are, those are the decisions that we'll have to make. But, yeah, the question, the question tonight is, does the city continue to move forward with a Crown, understanding that the cost to the city will be about, you know, 1.5 million And I think, okay, and I think the, you know, general consensus, I know everybody up here has concerns about, you know, how we, how we fill that one and a half million. Is it property tax increase? Is it, you know, reduction in expenses, whatever? It seems like there's a general consensus that this council's committed to moving forward with bringing a new Crown Center to Evanston.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So, so if that's the case, I know we've been at this conversation for a long time, so unless somebody feels really strongly that they still want to, you know, contribute to the conversation, I'd say, city manager, you've got direction. I guess the one other thing that I heard in this conversation is people up here certainly like the ideas that the library had and sort of renovating it in such a way, but that, that's going to have to be deferred in terms of the city taking on the additional expense for that for some time while we get through the Crown project. Mm-hmm. Okay. So, city manager, is that the direction that you were seeking?
Certainly. I would just ask for the latitude to continue to talk to the library. And as we, these discussions continue to move forward, if there's opportunities to come back with some sort of revised proposal that would accomplish the goals of the city council and not increase the tax burden, that we would have that, I'd have that flexibility. So, we'll continue to talk with the library. We'll come back to you next week with the, with the construction manager, the additional information that you've had. Again, my plan, I was going to start the conversation with you tonight about next year's budget, but thought that this might take a while this evening, as it has. But I plan to come back to you in a month to start talking about next year's budget and to start, I've never, in my 15, 16 years as a city manager, 27 years working in local government, ever gone to a council in February or March to talk about a budget that would start the following January. But I think it's important that we have these discussions and really the tenor and tone of your discussion this evening is why. Because we have serious issues as a community and as a municipal corporation we really have to start grappling with in order to continue to be everything to everybody and to do it at as low a cost as possible. So, I think the continued discussions with Crown are definitely a part of the larger budget questions for fiscal '19 and beyond. So, Mr. Mayor, we'll come back to you at your meeting on the 19th of March to have those discussions.
Great. Great. So, if everybody's ready, we'll move on to the next, next topic, which is appointments. Alderman Rainey, would you mind just putting forward the two appointments?
For reappointment, I move for the environment board, your reappointment of Linda Young and utilities commission Mark White. Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, Mark, Linda Young and Mark White have been appointed for reappointment. Thank you to both of them for serving. Call the wards. Let's start with Alderman Rue Simmons.
Thank you. I'm trying to pull it up. Alderman Braithwaite, help me out. So, I want to make sure that everyone is aware of Tour Noir on this coming Saturday. If you could give me the, or pick it up when you, when it comes to you.
I will.
So, join, it is a wonderful tour of the black businesses and the historical black business community in Evanston, and it'll end with a great event at the Levy Center. And Alderman Braithwaite will give you more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Savern?
The zoning board of appeals tomorrow night is going to meet to discuss 3233 to 3249 Central Street, and they're the determining body. So, for some reason, you're watching this at home and not paying attention to anything else, go to that meeting if you're concerned about that. It's a six-word project. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Rouval?
Just to second Alderman Simmons, Rue Simmons' plug for the Tour de Noir. I went last year, it was really great, and I encourage everybody to do that.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On February 23rd, Friday, you're going to do a ribbon cutting at Cafe Coral Lee at 1:00 on Howard Street, the old East Outpost. And on, let's see, February 27th at 7:00 at Peckish Pig, the Howard Street Business Association is going to meet. That's it.
Terrific. I'm looking forward to checking out your new place on Howard. Alderman Fleming?
I just want to thank the Ninth Ward residents who came to our meeting this last Saturday, and also to give you all an invitation to stop by the new after-school program that's happening over at Ridgefield. We will be opening on Tuesday, well, they will be opening on Tuesday, the 27th after school will be open from 3:30 till 6:00. I'm over at Cayman Park West, so feel free to stop by and see all that Ridgefield and our Parks and Rec team have put together over there.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, and I want to thank everyone for the discussion earlier, particularly my colleagues for, Alderman Simmons, Alderman Fleming, for flushing through those questions to help to get me where I needed to be. So, so thank you both. The mayor talked about this being a very difficult week for some families in town, and I just want to acknowledge the Belcher family for Alton Belcher Senior that recently passed. I didn't have a chance to speak at the funeral, but I know that Alderman Simmons is very close to the family, and they're very well-known in town. There are enough of them to actually have their own zip code. And obviously, Ms. Seemark and her family for the young man that passed, and then there's another woman, Doria Johnson, who we all know has been a genealogist and a historian in town. She recently passed. So, just keeping those families in prayer. Alderman Simmons, you brought up the Tour de Noir. So, that's going to take place this Saturday. The bus tour leaves Levy Center at 1:00 and will return at 3:30. And then, the business expo, which I think is just absolutely phenomenal, begins at 3:30 and it lasts until 7:30. And I think last year, we ran into an issue where the businesses were not able to sell, and they'll be able to do that this year. So, I encourage you all to bring your dollars and support the black businesses. And then, I think of, Mr. Hemingway left. I'm getting ready to send an email to all my fashion mentors in town, and Mr. Hemingway sent out notification that he's collecting business dress codes for our, for our students who are going to be participating in the mayor's summer youth employment program. So, I hope that you all pay attention to that and, and help with the donation of business clothes to help prepare our youth for their bright futures. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wen?
No.
Alderman Wilson? All right. I think we've gone around. We are going into executive session tonight, so Alderman Wilson, would you lead us into recessing for that?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss... council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel. These are agenda items, these agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and our, the exception is under the Open Meetings Act.